Families whom they left behind. Lord, I think of our first responders and our communities working hard and doing their jobs diligently. Lord, please be with them and protect them. I thank you for this leadership, Lord, with the mayor and city councilmen and women. And, Lord, I just ask that you be in this meeting. Let us do what's right in your eyes and let your truth and justice, Lord, just lead the way. We thank you and we love you, and I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 Councilwoman Slakta, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Slakta.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Longcarte.
Here.
All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Mayor.
All right, nicely done. Okay, at this time, we are going to have public comment on agenda items. That's on agenda items only. Anyone wishing to speak at this time, please come forward.
Yeah, I got two items. Oh, woo! Rick Steinmeier. Oh, woo! I don't think we need wolves in our natural, in our nature place. I know that people want to do good for these poor animals, but I don't think that's the right place for it. I see we have special events permits for a bunch of people, and I counted, I think, eight times where we're serving alcohol, and I don't think that's right. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I actually like Sister Mary Margarita. Anyway, my name is Deb McLean, and I'm with the banana peel, and I have a couple of things to mention. I see here, I mentioned to the Oak Creek Preserve, and I'm wondering if we also have a Spring Creek reserved in the planning, because I know we're trying to keep our creeks open and clear, and we're making a big effort on our waterways. The other thing was about the Wonder Gardens, their sign. I read over the demographics, and I'm particularly interested in the education level and the income levels on which that demographics, all those wonderful pie charts were presented. I'd like to know more about how that information was consolidated. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Donna Stone. I live at Worthington Country Club. I am speaking on behalf of the Shy Wolf Sanctuary. In 2005, I had the honor to be able to be a trainer for a day at that facility, and it was an enlightening experience, to say the least. When you have a one-on-one encounter with a wolf and they start connecting with you, it is something that you'll never forget. Their facility over there was hampered by the size of their lot. Their educational impact in Benita would be amazing. The schoolchildren from surrounding areas would benefit tremendously from this facility. It would enlighten them, not just because of the nature center that's there right now, but it would expand their knowledge towards other animals and the care that we have to take care of and the ability to protect the animals that we have right now, because if we keep killing them off, and every day we see panthers being killed by cars, you know, and then the numbers just keep rolling by, we have to take care of what we have right now. I think the facility would, it would be a great location. I think it would be a benefit, and I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council. My name is Tiffany McQuade. I'm here on behalf of McQuade Marketing. We are item I on the agenda today, and we want to tell you how excited we are at the opportunity to bring this free public concert to Riverside Park, and we hope you'll approve us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Fred Forbes, going to speak as an architect, because I think city council at the last meeting, at the second reading of revising.
But are you an architect?
I am an architect.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Wanted to make that abundantly clear.
In Florida and other states.
However, is this on the agenda today?
It is on the agenda, I believe, isn't it?
Okay.
Now, what is it?
It isn't?
Oh, well, then I made a mistake.
Well, that's all right.
Won't be the first one that I've made in my life.
That's all right. That's all right. And you're welcome to speak. It won't take us long to get the other agenda.
That's fine. I'll make another.
Fred, thank you very much.
Yep, just you.
Good morning, everyone. For the record, Kathy McGrath, and I'm speaking about the Shy Wolf Sanctuary. I've been a member of the Friends for over four years, and we have devoted so many hours and so many days and so much work for this beautiful preserve. We, some of the Friends went down to their facility to see what they're doing, and no one wants to take anything away. They are dedicated. They do a wonderful job. However, Nature Place is not an appropriate location for this. It is, if you think they're in a residential neighborhood there, we also have residential neighborhoods, very, very close. There's one residence right across the street, and as most of you know, my late husband and I helped develop the Lakes of San Souci along with the parents of someone who's sitting in the room right now, and my son still lives there, and I know people who live there. And you have to remember, just south along Kent Road from the YMCA is the eastern edge of the Lakes of San Souci, and there's a sign right there at that corner, 600 feet. I don't think any of you or any other people in here, no matter how much they're in favor of it, would want to live that close to it. We went down there with an open mind, and we asked questions. They have a wonderful operation there. However, when one wolf starts howling, they all join in. I don't think anybody in any development, anywhere in Benita Springs, I won't name any, would be happy to have that. Now, they told us, we asked about the waste. Remember, we're at the headwaters of the Imperial River. They say they trucked the waste out. Well, we have a little narrow shell road there. We don't let anyone drive beyond the parking lot. We lost one gopher tortoise last month. They also said they have to bring in trucks with food. You see, these are carnivores. They eat meat. They don't eat dog food, so they have to bring them in in trucks. We can have trucks driving up to the house. Our fear is, they, even if they said, oh, well, we'll just start with a small operation, we asked them, oh, is this temporary? Because they have, they have to move. They have to relocate. They have 20 acres down there they could move to, but they want to come closer. We said, is this temporary? Oh, no, no. They are proposing over 40 cages of wolves, and I think they have panthers, foxes, all the way over to the headwaters. They're proposing prairie dogs in the front where the gopher tortoise preserve is. This is completely inappropriate. Money, I haven't seen anything about signing a lease or paying anything. Who would pay for the refrigeration for the food or whatever? I think I've pretty much said it all. I believe you've heard from other people. I know I'm a member of the Imperial River Conservancy, and I know that Ryan Willoughby, our president, sent email out. He contacted everybody on the board, and I'm sure that you have received emails from other people. I know I heard from Steve Tridback, who was our former chairman of the Friends, and also Dallas Reboard. So, I know they're doing a wonderful job. I appreciate what they're doing, but the Nature Place is not an appropriate place. Let's put it this way. If they start it, let's say we'll do it small, and two years down the line, you have a new council, they might expand. So, please, studies have been done. Staff denied them. We don't need any more studies. It's just a waste of time. Let's cut this today, please. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Yes, Alex Grant, formerly city councilman, local planning agency member, and I was on the Benita Nature Place. Shannon Martin shanked me into being a board member there. So, I have trifle experience, and basically, while I have nothing against wolves, in fact, my dog Chrissy is semi-related, I think, to a very nice dog.
As are we all.
But, right, and, but there's, I think, not a very good compatibility situation when you have wolves and panthers, not denying their right to exist. Together with tortoises, I got the feeling that what might happen, the wolf might invite the turtle to lunch, and the turtle will be lunch. So, I think we have to consider what, that we're trying to protect the turtles. Oh, you know, this is not heaven, you know, where the lamb lives together with the lion, you know. If this were heaven, this would be a different situation. May I suggest an alternate location. There is a large, what is it, mining area, which is in the DRGR area, which should not be used for 1,600 or whatever homes in a Imperial River watershed area, but that area could be used for a larger animal preserve. I think that would be a much better location in the city for that type of a situation. Let's plant animal life there, not people from up north. So, it's, that's one of my suggestions on item 6C, and then I have an item on 8A, and I'll talk to that later. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed with the agenda, proclamations and presentations. And I believe, right now, we're going to review and prioritize the prioritization of our legislative priorities. Carl, did you want to start this off, or do we want to go ahead and bring our experts right on up?
Well, Mr. Mayor, first off, the list that's in front of you in the green sheet was prepared. It was a compilation of the items that were most received from individual council members. We put those into this particular list here. This is not in any particular order. What we are trying to do today, as we have in past years, is to get down to maybe five legislative priorities so that the city staff, the council members, and our lobbyists are not chasing their tails for, and not really being effective on any particular one, because they're too far spread. We certainly would invite Carolyn Ashley up to engage in this conversation as well. We, again, we just look forward to getting down to the top five. I will tell you that Councilmember Simmons and I had a discussion yesterday, and one of her questions was, well, you know, should we even put Home Rule down as one of our, filling one of our five slots? And I'm thinking we really shouldn't, because we're out there protecting Home Rule all the time, all the way through the legislative session. So, I'd recommend you not use one of your five slots for Home Rule protection. We will naturally be doing that as we go along. So, with that, turn it back over to the mayor and council and bring Carolyn Ashley up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So, how you doing?
Just great. How are you, Mr. Mayor?
Long time, long time no see.
Yeah.
Oh, was it? Spent hours, right?
Yeah.
Oh, wait. Anyway, Carolyn and I had the, had a very good time going up and talking to Matt Caldwell, representative, great guy. He was really, really kind.
It was a good meeting.
Really good meeting, so. Listen, council, what, before we engage our experts here, what do you think about the priority list? Does anybody have anything they'd like to add or subtract, or are you all satisfied with it? Yes, Martha?
Thank you, Mayor. Number two, no, well, of course, you know, mandated fertilizer regulations, but number three, support slot gaming at paramutials. In several years past, it was sort of just gaming issues that are important to our city, and one of them that I did put down as part of this when I sent that in was the decoupling of the regulations for the dogs running 400. They're required to run 400 times. They're losing money on 300 of them. So, I mean, even the owners have worked with Greyhound Y2K to try to reduce the dog usage over there. So, I mean, if we can support that as well. And then the, number six, support Lee Memorial constructing, well, we already support Lee Memorial doing that, but just legislatively, if we can see that there's a way that if the certificate of need issue comes up, we want to, I did talk to Jim Nathan. I did talk to the governor. I did talk to, I've been researching this issue. What can we do? How can we be supportive? And that's basically what that is, is, you know, how can we, how can we help get that thing going on? So, that's all I have to say about that. Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, and I, and I think that what we need to do is, there are goals and there are objectives and ways to attain those goals. And so, right now, we're talking goals. And even when it comes to support slot gaming and paramutial, one of the objectives in getting to there may be to support.
Decoupling.
The decoupling part of it. So, I don't think we need to list all of the objectives that are attached to that. And the same goes with the support Lee Memorial. I would, however, take the 80-bed off of there in our mention. I think we should just support Lee Memorial and their efforts to create a hospital facility in.
Agreed.
Good point.
You know, so, so we need to keep it as general as possible there. But, other than that, are there any other comments?
I guess I might just add to that. When Martha and I were up at the Florida League of Cities, we did have our 2.2 minutes, I think, with the governor. And there's obviously a different opinion here between private health care and public health care and private hospitals and public hospitals. So, I think we know where that issue is, and I think we know where that is.
I believe it's in the courts right now, so.
It is.
Yeah.
My husband works for NCAT.
Yeah, I know.
But obviously, a very strong difference of opinion.
Right. Yes, there is. Yeah, there is that.
Mayor?
Well, personally.
But we understand what you're saying. You know, this is a, in general, supporting Lee Memorial and their efforts to be able to have a facility here, so.
Yeah, and I want everybody to know that Carl now, we've, we're, the attorneys for Lee Memorial are in constant contact with Carl. The people at Lee Memorial, they know that whatever it is that they need so far as their strategy, and what we don't want to do is go off and do something that is contrary to what their strategy is, because it could prove to be counterproductive. So, we're working closely with them, and we have let them know, Martha, that anything that they need, we are willing to do for them. So, I mean, and that right now, what they need are some gathering statistics, future growth plans, you know, what's coming out of the ground, what's projected. Those are the things, the information that they need so that they can prove the need to the administrative law judge.
Sure.
Once it gets to that point, right now, the governor can't opine one way or the other. It's not going to matter.
Right.
And, and I'm sure he'd be willing to tell you his opinion, but it's just really not going to affect this particular part of it. Once it comes out of this, then, then it may be time to, if I say the judge says, yeah, take it back and reconsider it, it's worth reconsideration, then we can go ahead and go back to public comment.
And Mayor, when my conversation with the governor was just that, that it's in this process. We won't know anything until November. Then I'll be going to your state agency. What is it that we need to do to help you help us have this happen? And he said, get rid of the certificate of need. And I said, you know, I talked to Jim Nathan. He said, yeah, but we just want to make sure that we take care of indigent people, and that's basically his hangup. And other than that, I think, you know, it could happen. After thinking about my, my conversation with him, I actually think it was pretty positive. So, we'll see where that goes. But in talking to Jim Nathan, because I did call him, say, Jim, what can we do? He goes, I can't rally the support, but if you guys rally support, fine with us, but we've got a hearing we got to go to. So, that was it.
Well, and just, and just for your information, too, during the time that we're in Tallahassee, Lee Memorial's lobbyists and I probably bump into each other almost every day or every other day. We have, you know, we have a very good working relationship, and certainly when he gets that direction from Jim, and we have the direction from you, we'll coordinate what we can with him.
I'd just like to keep it on as an option. Thanks, Mayor, very much.
Thank you very much. So far, is anything else? What, how do you feel, council, about leaving protect, I mean, let's face it, Carl, it doesn't, whether there's five, six, 11 on here, I kind of like the idea of leaving, just protect Home Rule authority, because I just think it's a statement that needs to be said a lot, and that's it. I know that that's what we're doing, and if you, if you don't really see any harm in leaving it there, I think it, it's just a statement that we need to make for the public standpoint. But go ahead.
So, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification now, because, again, we're trying to keep this number down, and we've got eight things listed here. It sounds to me as if council is in favor of us proceeding with legislative priorities as stated here, number one, number two, number three, perhaps, you know, adding the decoupling as well, and then number six. So, that's four there. If you do want to add protect Home Rule authority, that would be your fifth one, and the rest of them, we would kind of just be generally cognizant of, but would not be necessarily legislative priorities. Am I getting that signal from the council?
Yes.
Are those the top five?
I think that, so far as the top five.
Yes.
Of course, the self-determination.
Yes.
Post-mandated federal fertilizer regulations, the gaming, and then support Lee Memorial's efforts, one, two, three, four.
That'd be four.
And the, what would be the fifth one?
Well, I mean, you're talking about keeping Home Rule authority on the top five, unless you find another one you'd like to put in the top five, and Home Rule authority would certainly be on the list to protect, but we.
Yeah, it would be one of the real obvious ones. So, council, what's your pleasure? We have support education generally. Now, in, when we pick these, that doesn't mean we're not going to be supportive of these other things, but.
Right.
So far as prioritization, which one, which one is at the top of our, now, is it support sustainability, support funding for regional planning councils, or support general education? Which, where do you want to put our efforts to? Yes?
Well, my initial thought is education, but I also like what you said. It doesn't matter if we have five, 11, or 17.3. There's eight here. I think we should focus on all eight.
Okay.
Mayor?
We have the top five.
Yes, yes.
I submitted support state funding for regional planning councils. I mean, I'm happy to withdraw that. However, just keep an eye on it. The governor has said that he won't sign any state funding for regional planning councils, although he's now converted them into planning districts for economic development. And for us, I think we should say, yes, we're supportive of the Regional Planning Council for Economic Development. You don't want to fund it, but there will be also a move, possibly a potential, to consolidate. I've mentioned this at other council meetings, but to consolidate Regional Planning Councils so that instead of, I think we have 11, that'll go down to eight, and one of the councils that'll be carved up is ours, that we lose influence that way. We lose regional planning, which is, you know, important. They're talking about Collier going to Miami. I don't know what the heck they have in common. I don't know where the heck Lee's going to go, probably Central, and possibly Charlotte going to Sarasota, or Sarasota going to Tampa. It just, I'd like to just be able to keep it there to keep an eye on it, you know, all for education, of course, because we all went to school. But I don't know what that has to do with being a municipal issue.
Well, why don't we, why don't we do this? This may be an idea, maybe something a little different. Obviously, there are some of these things that are fairly specific, you know, so far as the annexation incorporation and self-determination.
Sure.
That's specific. The fertilizer regulations, specific.
Mm-hmm.
The gaming is really specific. Then you've got the, the support education generally. Maybe there should be another classification. We should bring those down, and we, those should be ones that we are consistently supportive of, that she's on the lookout. Like you've said before, those are the things that you'll watch, because, you know, what one person considers to be supportive education is going to be something different to somebody altogether. So, obviously, anything that says education on it, we're not going to support. I mean, we don't want to say that either. So, why don't we just divide these into ones that are specific, that we know that are issues, and there may only be three or four of them. But when it comes to support Home Rule authority, that's really general. Fine, we'll bring that down on the general rule list. Support education generally, fine, we'll bring that down on the general overall. Support sustainability, that's exactly right. We're not going to support every sustainability effort that comes forward, because we're not going to, we may not agree with it, or they may be contrary to what we want. And the same thing goes with the Regional Planning Council things. We may not support everything they come up with. We may not want to support it. So, why don't we do that? Why don't we just use the specific ones? I think we have only three or four of those that are really specific. Yes, go right ahead.
And I guess, you know, upon further discussion here, where we have education, support education generally, I'd actually like to refine that to say support public education and charter school education generally. I mean, I think, quite frankly, the time has come to quit distinguishing education. It's education. Public education is here to stay. Charter school education is here to stay. In fact, they're expanding, and Benita Springs is looking at the potential of having a charter high school in the city. So, I'd like to make that specific, quite frankly, and focus on it.
Mayor?
So, you would say that support charter.
Public education.
Public education.
And charter education.
Public and private education.
There you go.
Mayor?
Okay, and, okay, so there's that. Yes.
May I get more specific, then, with support sustainability? We got a big deal going on here with Lake O. How about if we say Lake Okeechobee issues and water quality issues, you know, enhancing our water quality, not making it worse, of course. It's really important for our community. I don't know if we want to do that. I know, again, the governor's not real keen on green energy, so that's not going to happen anytime soon, but the water issues are really heating up. They're going, it's going to be a big year for water. Do you agree with that?
And you follow those anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. I follow every water bill that gets filed.
And, and again, I think that even though we say we want to support water quality issues, that is nebulous, because there isn't anything specifically proposed at the time that we know of. These other ones, these are specific, we've got specific ones, and then we've got general things. And I think what you're asking to do, I mean, unless we have a, if there is a piece of legislation that comes through on any of these general ones, you'll bring it to us. Do you want us to support that?
We always do.
We'll say yes. But on these specific ones, we are going to support.
Yes, sir.
These. I mean, these are specific. So, if we could, Carl, if we could break it down to, say, the self-determination, the opposed to fertilizer regulation, mandated fertilizer regulations, the support gaming, and then I think that, you know, that's, that's really our top three, and along with support Lee Memorial's creation of a hospital facility, that's four. I think the rest of them can be put in a general category of, instruct our lobbyists to observe these, and when particular legislation comes forward, bring it back to us, to where we can support or not support them, whatever it is. Council, would that be all right?
Mayor?
Because unless, because we don't want to send them up there to go, hey, we support water quality legislation. Really? All of it? No. No, you don't. You know, so, let's, let's just.
We can be judicial.
Yes, Steve.
Mayor, I like the way you broke it down. Excuse me. But we don't need five, do we?
No.
Okay, so, let's just go with the four and move on.
You have four that are rather specific.
We've got four specifics. We've got, I guess, four general, which we can make general, but my, and we're happy to do that. My question is, just for clarification, that on the general ones, do you want the additional wording that has been discussed? So, for sustainability generally, however, let's have a specific watch on.
Water quality.
Lake O issues or water quality, and then, of course, another one was on, on education. Do we want to say specifically public and private and charter education?
Well, I think it's a good, good point on both of those, but I think in sustainability, my only opinion here is that in sustainability, you can put on there slash, you know, also water quality, to include those water quality part, because to be sure that it does.
That's fine. We can do that.
Because I think it does include those, so.
Okay. Do we need a motion on this, Mayor?
Yes.
So, move.
Okay, we have a motion with the additional language that Peter and Martha have supported here, to have the top four specific ones, and then the remainder be in a general category that you will come back to us when there are specific legislation proposed, right?
Yes.
Second for discussion.
We have a second for discussion. Yes.
Just out of curiosity, the, the items we're bringing forward to you, do they conflict with other clients that you have, or are we kind of on the same track? All right, great.
We're fine.
Good.
We have no conflicts.
No conflicts.
Good. Okay, and any comment?
We can do that in stereo.
You can. Any comment about this before we do this, or are you okay?
No, sir, other than, our direction in the past has always been, and I know that you all understand that Ashley does all the reports, but our direction in the past has always been that we had direct line to Carl, and then he would interact with you as, as needed with those, so that we're not just running your email boxes full all the time. So, that's still the direction you'd like us to take.
Absolutely. I don't think anything has changed, council, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. Okay, any other comment? Carl, do you have anything else before we go along? You clear?
Good, sir.
You're good? All right, roll call.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Aye.
Councilman Longcarte.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
And Martha, Peter, thank you for all your, your work in, up at the League of Cities on this and looking after these legislative priorities. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much, all of you have been working on this. And, do you have anything else for us, before you take off?
Just that we, you know,
Just that we, you know, we enjoy working with each and every one of you, and with the staff that you have here, and we look forward to a very productive year. So, anything that we can do to help facilitate that, you know how to get ahold of us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on our sheet here is a presentation by the Small Business Development Center of Florida Gulf Coast University. How are you doing today?
I am well, thank you, sir. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, citizens and employees of Benita Springs. It's my pleasure to come before you to report on the activities of Florida Gulf Coast University's Small Business Development Center, office right here in Benita Springs. In my last report, I announced that Cottage One is open for business, and we certainly have been more busy than I anticipated at the time. Between April 1 and July 31, my office provided eighty-five no-cost consultations to twenty-eight separate entities. You have in front of you some of this data as I'm throwing it out at you. Of those twenty-eight entities, one quarter were individuals with an idea that they might wish to own a business. They needed some help thinking about the concept and pointers in the process and knowledge required to start one. In the governmentese language that we use in our organization, we refer to these individuals as pre-venture individuals. The other twenty-one were existing businesses in a wide variety of industries. I assisted professional offices, a construction company, a manufacturer, and even a commercial fisherman. I shall take that latter as evidence that even someone from the Midwest, a newbie here, can quickly become acclimated, acclimated, I'm sorry, to this paradise. Demographically, approximately half of the firms were female-owned, three of those carrying the minority business enterprise designation. We are in the process of assisting two Hispanic and two additional female-owned firms to obtain that certification. It is important to those entities, if they wish to do business with governments at federal, state, and local level, as it provides some priority over firms without that designation in the contracting process. Employee counts for the emerging and established businesses that we counseled range from one to fifty-five. Their time in business varied from a few months to a few decades. Corporations, by far, were the most common legal structure, which is somewhat surprising if we consider the national statistics for small businesses. Of course, four months of consultations is but a very small sample, and I expect that data to change over the next few months. Besides providing free consultations, our office also sponsors educational programs. We were delighted that city consented to co-sponsor our Doing Business in Benita What You Need to Know series. Our first session on July 24 at the Lyles Hotel was attended by seven individuals representing six firms. While I handled the business management part of the seminar, Ms. Arlene Hunter covered the rules and processes for the city, and did a superb job of explaining the incentives you offer. John Dolmar and Jacqueline Jensen assisted by answering questions at the end of the session. The session was a success, and we will repeat it in November. Thank you for your agreement to sponsor, co-sponsor it. We will hold seminars in September on the topic of getting more customers, and in October, we will discuss the SBA loan process. Tomorrow morning, we will be hosting an invitation-only lenders' roundtable at the Lyles Hotel, where we expect to meet fifteen or so bankers, to exchange knowledge and expectations about the local economy, lending activity currently, and what they project into the near future. The city will be represented by your Director of Development. Regrettably, the Economic Development Council has a conflict and will not be able to attend this session. I expect to repeat that sort of roundtable about twice a year. I think it will be beneficial for all of us. Over the next few months, the Florida SBDC Network will be transitioning to a new branding and appearance in our material. I have provided you folders, letterhead, and some note-taking materials, so you can see as a preview what it's going to be, look like. Our state leadership is excited about the change, and we expect it to generate some new notice for the system. When I spoke to you last May, I promised that we would cooperate with others in our effort to bring business to Benita Springs. During the period under review, we have worked with the city and the Economic Development Center in an attempt to import a light manufacturing firm to the city. It's too early to predict whether that effort will bear fruit. We have cooperated with the Chamber of Commerce. I'm on the team that brings the August Refresher Series to the council, to the Chamber of Commerce sessions. We have met with SCORE, and we frequently exchange referrals. We are in the process of arranging two pre-approval meetings with the city for new businesses. Most importantly, in my opinion, we are spreading the word that Benita Springs is business-friendly and a great place to live. We are continuously introducing and reintroducing SBDC in this territory. We welcome contact with anyone who needs help or has questions regarding the operations or the start of a business. We are a community resource. I have developed a habit, and it's something that I would have denied even as little as a few months ago, of saying that I am from the government, and I am here to help. As your assistant, as your city manager keeps impressing on me, government light works, and the SBDC is delighted to support it. I look forward to continued cooperation and success with all parties. I thank you.
Thank you, nicely done. Council, do you have any questions for the gentleman? Anyone? Thank you very much, and Carl?
Yeah, I just want to say something nice about Rudy here, and that is, first off, my-
I'm not sure I can allow that, but-
I know, just, but just one thing, no. Rudy is doing a great job. The SB, our partnership with the SBDC here has always been strong. It was strong when I was in the city of Cape Coral as well. But I will tell you that Rudy does something that we have not seen. He provides service really above and beyond what is typically expected from the SBDC, and that is, he's actually been involved in bringing us some economic development leads. And we think that's wonderful, and we know that he's a Benita Springs resident as well, and we appreciate his service here and his assistance. So, thank you, Rudy.
Thank you, Carl. Life in paradise is good.
It is good, and you guys have been a great addition to that downtown area there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good deal. Okay, next on the list here, we have a presentation by Shy Wolf Sanctuary. Maybe?
Maybe not.
Yes, you do. I am just here to kind of let you know that staff has been working with Shy Wolf Sanctuary, but what we decided, because of the nature, I guess, of the proposal, as well as some concerns from the community that have come in, we have met with Shy Wolf and asked them to do this presentation to council, so that you can decide if we should move forward or not with some type of usage agreement. We have not done that so far, so I just wanted to let all of you know. This isn't something that we have put together until you give your okay or no. So, just to introduce now, Mark Scorola from Shy Wolf, and they will start their presentation.
Good deal, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Mark Scorola, and today we will present a presentation on why we believe that a partnership between the Benita Nature Place and Shy Wolf Sanctuary Education and Experience Center would be a benefit to the city.
Mark, thank you for being here. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. We feel that what we are going to propose will be a benefit to all parties involved, including the city, who is the owner of the land, and Benita being a business-friendly city, we believe that we can make a direct impact on the city and preserve the nature place and work in partnership with them in order to present a beautiful place for people to come to. So, first, we're going to start out with a five-minute video, to be followed just by a brief PowerPoint presentation, and then we'll be available to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Good.
We delivered a packet to you guys with questions and also some other information, which is on your desk, so we'll go from there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to Shy Wolf Sanctuary. We've been providing sanctuary for exotic animals in need of rescue and rescue for over twenty years. The sanctuary allows us to educate the global community about how these animals come to the need of rescue, in an effort to eliminate this harmful cycle. By sharing the role and importance of the animals in their wild habitat, we create empathy and understanding of the lessons we can each learn, and how we can all make a difference in the world around us. Shy Wolf Sanctuary helps more than just wolves. In fact, we rescue and house a variety of animals, including coyotes, gopher tortoises, and serenites, just to name a few. We provide safe, secure, and comfortable habitats for all of our rescued friends, regardless of how long they stay with us. And we've not had a single escape from our enclosure, thanks to the safety measures in place that include ten-foot high sensing, three-foot leaning with buried chain link anti-dick, and guillotine gate in lockdown.
Emotional trauma and stress they're put under is more than they can handle. They won't come back. They can't come back to, except for you. Uti, whether that's true or not, has been through five owners before he got here, which kind of tells history. Put your hands down low about an investigation, and he knows that you're no threat at that point. It'll help you to keep from getting in a problem with an animal that you don't know.
We have many wonderful volunteers who help us keep the sanctuary running. They take the animals on walks around the perimeter, which allows them to explore new areas and smell, those very important things to wild and domestic animals. This is safe to do as we keep an eight-foot perimeter on all big animal habitats, and our animals are on leashes. Working with volunteers allows us to further engage in hands-on education, like with the Eagle Scout projects, such as the Butterfly Garden and the Fox Habitat. It also allows us to enrich the lives of our animals, not only by exposing them to loving individuals, but by providing an enhanced habitat that allows them to graze and find a variety of natural food. Volunteers are an important daily part of helping maintain clean and healthy habitats for the animals. By taking special measures to keep the habitats clean, there is virtually no environmental impact from the sanctuary.
I've owned property in Golden Gate State since the late nineteen eighties, and built a house about one mile from here. We are in support of it, and another reason I wanted to come here today was to donate a little money and spread the word to the people about what you're doing here.
Some of our animals are commonly found in the wild here in Southwest Florida, like coyotes. We make a special effort to educate visitors on their habits and behaviors, since the coyote population has increased. Bobcats, pampers, and some other big cats are also native to our area, and they have a special place here at Shy Wolf, too. I started because I found that there was a big need for a place for animals like this, wolves, dogs, big cats, little cats, because there were so many people that had these animals, and then decided that they didn't want them anymore. We don't buy, we don't sell, nor do we breed. We rescue. We do a very big service for the community.
Been here for, neighbors for twenty-two years. When we first moved in, you know, I was kind of, what is Shy Wolf, whatever we came up from that zone, they explained it to us. Haven't had any surprises in twenty-two years, so.
As wonderful as it has been for us here with Nancy and Kent at the Shy Wolf Sanctuary, the reality is that we have simply outgrown our current space. In order to grow and expand our community involvement, educational efforts, and continue with the ability to provide the best possible life for our animal rescues, we need to relocate to a property that offers the ability for growth, not in numbers, but in services we can offer. Shy Wolf has drawn visitors from over forty states and from more than twelve countries, boosting tourism, too. Shy Wolf Sanctuary brings more than meets the eye to our community. We bring a deep and spiritual connection to nature and the wildlife that surrounds us here in Southwest Florida. We strive to educate people by giving them the opportunity to learn firsthand and to experience the wondrous connectivity to these precious animals. What we do saves the lives of countless animals, rescues them from horrible conditions, hopeless futures, and certain death. What the animals give us in return is priceless, unconditional acceptance, love, and a better understanding of the world around us through their eyes. We are Shy Wolf Sanctuary, and we are from the heart for the animals.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Thank you for seeing us today. My name is Mike Sullivan. I'm a volunteer with the Shy Wolf Sanctuary. Nice video, huh?
Very nice.
I like to apologize in advance here. I'm pretty good with the wolves, but I'm not so good with technical issues, so if I go backwards or forwards the wrong way, please bear with me. I have a short PowerPoint, as you see the first one up there. See, I could do all that, I just don't want to help her.
Yeah.
I couldn't, I couldn't even know what she's doing.
Right here.
You got three blondes doing this, you know.
Oh, boy, oh, boy.
I'm laughing at something I heard earlier, actually.
Okay, strike one.
My wife, my daughter, my dog, they're all blonde.
It was a correct observation.
Well, you saw a nice video, and there was actually that one guy that looked kind of like me. He was, pretty much stole the show, I think. Shy Wolf started about twenty years ago, really, with Nancy, the lady you saw in there earlier talking about some things. She started, and just saw a need, and just stepped forward. As they just started out rescuing animals, they thought there was something that needed to be done there, and obviously there was. They realized that there was a natural connection, like the lady that had been out earlier, and she said, "It's a connection you won't forget." She's telling you the absolute truth, and anybody that has been at Shy Wolf has felt that before. It's something you won't forget. We realized that early on, there was a tremendous educational opportunity as well. So, for lo these many years, have we seen many, many thousands of people, and we've spread the message, basically, be environmentally responsive, make good decisions, and don't repeat. See, that didn't take long, did it?
There we go.
Yeah. You can go ahead and go to the next one. That's why I prefaced earlier what might happen. Through the process, to get started and to continue this effort, it takes a lot of credential. This is a listing of what we have going right now. Naturally, we're a 501(c)(3). Some of the ones are more difficult to get, like the licensing through the USDA, the Agriculture and Consumer Services, Florida Wildlife Conservation. These guys don't hand out things easily, and we're a unique organization in that we're one of the few places in the United States where guests that come to see us can actually get in and interface one-on-one, that means hands-on, with a pure wolf. That is something you will never forget, I promise. It's a, it's something we've used, we use every day as an educational tool. But anyway, these hoops that we jump through, hang on one second, these hoops that we jump through, they also come with licensing and inspection, inspections that are yearly, and we have to pass, and we've done so for twelve years since we've really gone ho-haw with this thing. Okay, next one. As we've gone through our, our, their history here, we haven't gone without recognition either. Both in 2012 and 2013, we were awarded the Best of Naples by, which is voted on by the public through the Naples Daily News, so it's not, so that obviously the public appreciates what we're doing as well. And the Humane Society awards are from two different Humane Societies, and basically, I think, they're for caregiver awards that are- I think, they're for caregiver awards that are also something we take very great pride in. And I can say, I've done many, many, many tours and talked to hundreds, if not thousands of people, probably. I've never heard anybody leave that said they were disappointed, that said there was something else that should be done, that said anything but like, "Man, this is incredible." Next one. This is a picture, an aerial picture of our current location. We're located right now between the red lines, and this is in a residential neighborhood, as was pointed out earlier. The properties on both sides are a little more Spartan than we are, and my point is this: we, inside that area, I mean, between the red, there are approximately 20 enclosures. We've done everything we can think of to do to keep it green and in its most natural setting. As you could tell by the video, you can see some of that as well, and that's kind of who we are. You know, we're not, we're not does, replant, and that kind of thing. We try and go around rather than over or through. On the financial fact sheet, we try to make it quick and easy. We have budget on the left, and who is supported by on the right, a couple of things I'm very proud of here. We have 12 years of operating in the black, and for any business, as you guys know better than anybody, to be able to say that is something. For a nonprofit, especially in this day and age, it's amazing. And if you look at the budget on one of the pie squares, it tells you at the top that we have an annual budget right now of about $120,000. It's 100% donor-supported. There's something else we're very proud of. We are, I will say, we also, just so I point out here, we don't have any salaried employees. We are 100% volunteer, so anybody can rest assured that whatever dime is coming our way, it's going to the animals, period. And on the, on the, supported by, there are the corporate donation and grants, we're kind of just breaking into this, really. We have had some, but we are ramping up a lot of these things, because as was pointed out earlier, we've kind of outgrown our place, and we're looking to make a move. Go ahead. But that brings the question, and why did we choose BNP, or what is attractive about that? Well, we have kind of a shared purpose. You know, they have a lot of the similar philosophies that we do. The community support for Benita has been a welcoming kind of thing, and it's not always that way when you're trying to make, you know, with businesses. It should be, but it's not, and we really appreciate that. The accessibility of I-75 is amazing. It's much better than what we have now. It will be a boon for what we do. It's centrally located between Fort Myers and Naples. This is also a good thing, both from a draw of the public and also FGCU, which is my next thing. We use a tremendous amount of FGCU volunteers who get their community service hours working with us. It'll be much closer for them, and we'll be able to do better with that. And something else that's kind of like, can be really difficult to muddle through, the permitting and zoning issues that we might have, Benita's been very friendly about that stuff. That's very much appreciated by us, I can promise you. Here's some of the things we have to offer. The assets on the left, obviously. We do have shares, we told you before, we do have a shared philosophy with the attractions at BNP. We don't want to make any changes. We want to add to, not take away or compromise. That's who we are. We want to go around, we don't want to go through. We're highly connected in social media, and we're all expanding that rapidly. We have 6,200 friends on Facebook, and that goes up, obviously, continuously. We have a 12-year proven management staff, so if we are awarded this opportunity, anything, any new duties that might come our way with helping BNP or anything like that, the Benita Nature Place, there won't be a large learning curve. You know, we've been doing this sort of thing and maintaining this sort of thing for quite a while, so we're up to speed. The tourism issue, unique travel destination, rather, we do have guests from all those countries. I was talking to somebody from the Netherlands the other day, a couple, that were filling out their paperwork, because when they come back in a few, they're coming back next year for two months, they're going to volunteer at our place for the two months. At least, not every single day, but, you know, several days a week. That's very common. We have them from England, no, England's not listed either, and the country thing right there, but we also have guests from England as well. We do, and we do put those numbers through our gates every year. Those are opportunities, obviously, for us to educate, but they're also opportunities that are going to come the way of Benita Springs, as far as meals and lodging and other opportunities that, on vacation, because most of the people that we see are not local, or a good number of them, and they're always looking for those things. We'll drive them straight to the businesses located in our general vicinity, and that's Benita Springs. We are a community resource, too. As we said earlier, we can do community service hours for a number of organizations. We also work closely with the scouts. We do provide volunteer services, and we're, you know, we've talked about the corporate retreat thing. Some of the things, that's a nice graph on the left here. We have the beds and heads things, which is what we just talked about, more or less. We will drive a lot to the local businesses. We'll provide a good exposure. We act as, we do a lot of concierge services, concierge-type services, in speaking to people after our tours are over. Well, what can we do? Where can we go to lunch? Where should we stay? We talk up the community, because that's what we like to do. You know, we're, we volunteer to do this stuff, and we're happy about doing it. So we like to promote what's going on around us, too, in a positive way. We don't, and we want to maintain the BNP as envisioned. We don't, we're not looking to change anything. We want to add to, not take away, for sure. We've been down the trail system. Nicole was kind enough to take us down the new trail system, and it's incredible. When it really ties in with Benita, it's going to be something truly special. We'll definitely be promoting that as well. My personal favorite is responsible stewardship. I never had really understood that, but it's been explained to me. I think it means we'll take real good care of your place. Here's what we need. Somehow, we are looking to improve our habitats, which means to expand them, the size of them to some degree, and add some things that the animals could use, like some water features that are, they get cooled off in large water containers that we have. We're looking to do a little better than that in some ways. We want a separate food and storage and preparation place. We need a little bit of an area to do that. A clinical treatment area, so we don't have to remove our large animals off-site. It's tough to deal with a cougar, although the vets get very excited when they understand you're bringing a cougar in, because they work on guinea pigs most of the time, so. But there, it's tough to deal with that. We want to be able to do that on-site. We also would like to have a 24-hour person on our property, take care of any emergencies that might come up, and keep an eye on things. In moving forward with the intern housing, we do a lot of, we have done some research with some of the universities in the state of Florida. We want to expand on that. We want to bring in more people, because they're, they view us as their asset in that they can get a study together on animal behavior without actually spending two years in the wild. Hurricane disaster option, well, that doesn't necessarily have to be on-site. That's something we've talked about. We need a better plan in case a hurricane does look like it's coming our way, that we can move our guys, but we can work with that. Well, that's it. I want to say thank you to you all for having us today. I want to assure you that we'll be a partner for Benita that will drive business to the local community and a lot of goodwill, and will also be the kind of neighbor you'll be proud to have. And I say thank you.
Thank you very much. If you would stick around for just a minute. Council, do you have any questions for the gentleman? Steve? You have something? No? Anyone? Yes, Martha?
Yeah, have you contacted Everglades Wonder Gardens?
This is Deanna Depin.
Hi.
She's actually the brains of the operation. I'm more just the eye candy.
Yeah, I noticed. Hi, no, our understanding was that was under new management, and we're looking to establish a different type of facility than what the Wonder Gardens had as far as enclosures for the animals before. I don't know if that would be a possibility there, but we would be open to pursuing options.
Yeah, because I think there was an article in the newspaper today. They need people to come and see what they're doing, but they do, that's a, we don't have jurisdiction over that, but, you know, it's talking about centrally located. Can't get more central than the middle of our redevelopment area. It's got a history of attractions, Arts and Attraction Council since '36, and people are used to going there to see tours of animals. It just came to mind this morning, I think what you do is fantastic. I want you in my city, but I don't know that Benita Nature Place is the right place. Well, I know it's not the right place, but I do, I do want you here. Not only do we need the eye candy, but, you know, what you do is really interesting, and I've been to your place several years ago at the insistence of Skip Kent. I've donated money to you. I just am not, I'm just not for the Benita Nature Place, but I do want to help you find someplace in town.
We appreciate that, and we would be open to other options, like the one gentleman mentioned, some other land that might be available as well. You know, anything along that line, we're open to. We don't feel like it has to be mutually exclusive, though. We know that the Benita Nature Place is costing the taxpayers in this area some money. It might be that we could work out some sort of a, well, maintaining and running and paying staff to be there, and it might be some sort of an agreement could be worked out where we could have an educational program on-site and still have our other animals off-site, too. So this, this is really just kind of a first coming to you, and we've kind of been in flux as to what we've been told, and, you know, as far as what can or cannot be done, so we would like to, as far as what could or could not be built there. As Mike stated, we do have certain needs, and if you determine that those needs cannot be met on Benita Nature Place, we would be open to discussing other options as far as that goes, whether Benita Nature Place is still a part of that for Shy Wolf Sanctuary to help come in and run or not. But we have addressed some of the concerns and questions that were raised by some of the other community members that came up and spoke. As far as the noise level goes, we did have a reading done, and if you want to look at the slide that we added at the end. I was the human howling, and my howl was louder than the whole pack of wolves. So just to give you an example of what the measurements are, when the whole pack howls, it's not that high. It's much lower than a Harley-Davidson running, it's much lower than an airplane overhead, and it lasts less than two minutes. So as far as the noise complaints go, our neighbors have been pretty satisfied with us and the level of noise, and we haven't had any issues with zoning regarding that. As far as the gopher tortoises, we have gopher tortoises on-site.
Very noisy. Very noisy.
Tortoises are noisy, yes.
Irritating.
Hard to keep them under control.
They're like a bullet.
We do have wild ones, and we do have rescued ones, and I can tell you honestly, in the 12 years I've been out there, I've never picked one up out of an enclosure, so our wolves are not gopher tortoise predators. They, they're very satisfied with the frozen chicken that we bring in, so.
Frozen chicken predators, okay.
Yeah.
Got it. All right, any other questions? I've been out there, I, you can't go there without it touching your heart. I mean, I, I had expectations, just like everybody else does when you go to visit the place, and the people that all volunteer there and work there, it is so organized, it is such a wonderful place, and the animals, I mean, it's just amazing. It's just amazing, and I mean, not that I'm all that spiritual a person or anything like that, but you, you can feel that there is something really right about what you do out there, and I want to thank you for that first. I also would love for you to be in Benita Springs. I think it's a perfect fit for our community in general. I, I would hate for us to, you know, predispose ourselves one way or the other about it. Whatever council wants to do is fine, but I, if there are facilities, obviously, that you're going to need so far as something that's, that won't fit with the Benita Nature Center, then we don't want you to go away. We, we want you to stick around so that we can help you to find something that may be a better fit for you.
We appreciate that.
So, so I don't, I don't think that, I don't think, I don't foresee this being an action item tonight, but I would appreciate you giving us a chance, and staff a chance to look a little further into this, make a recommendation to the council, and then let us contact you and say, "Hey, look, will you allow us to help you in another way?" Counsel, would that be all right for you?
Nicely put.
Would that be all right?
I'd like to.
Yes, go ahead.
I've, have been to your facility years ago on my own, and then I came just recently again, just because of the, you know, the proposition before us to join with the nature place. And as much as I love what you do, and I agree, you are touched, it's awesome, I don't think that it's a good fit. I've heard from the residents, and that's who I have to represent, is our residents, and I have not received one comment up to now that that was supportive of it. I also represent the friends of the nature place, and they, too, tried to remain open to the possibility, because they, too, want to see the nature place succeed, and they, too, came to the conclusion that it just wasn't the right property. They're concerned about how wet it gets. They don't want the animals standing in water, and it does get wet, and there were lots of concerns. We're charged as a council with the water quality issues of the Imperial River, and that water, those flowways, those original flowways to the river go right through the property, and that's where some of the proposed areas for the pens were. So that becomes an absolute issue for us as a council to do the right thing for the river. So I would love to have you in Benita Springs as so much, I just don't think that the nature place is the right, the right fit at this time.
Thank you.
Right, and I guess, in a way to echo some sentiments that I've already heard here, my grandfather was a veterinarian, not just kind of these vets that you see now on location. I'm talking an old country, New Hampshire veterinarian, where I would travel around the countryside with him, and my grandmother would tell us which farm to go to by CB radio, and we would, you know, take care of horses and cows and pigs, and yes, even wolves. I've been bitten by most of them, although I've never been bitten by a wolf or any variation thereof, so I do have a compassion, a deep compassion for animals. But I guess what I'm just saying is, I just don't believe, and I've heard from people, a lot of people that I respect deeply, that certainly appreciate the nature place and live in that area, that the location is not the appropriate one. But I do support what you're doing, and would love to have you in town, but believe we need to look at other locations.
Okay. Any other comment? Okay. If you would, I would like to, Counsel, if you would, would it be all right for staff to go ahead and continue to work with them, to look at other, other locations?
Absolutely.
And I would like, like for staff to go ahead and opine on, I mean, it's one thing to feel as though an area isn't, isn't the right fit, but we do need, we need, do need to list those concerns for them so that they have an opportunity to say, "Okay, well, the place that we look for, it needs to be, it needs to be conducive to this, to this, to this, to this, and, and, you know, high and dry. The area out there won't, won't be good, because we don't want to have that kind of storage or refrigeration or that kind of a thing out there," or whatever it is. I just don't want them to think that Benita Place, Benita Springs is a place where it's like, "Wow, we just don't think it will be." I, I think there needs to be really good, good reasons laid out for them, for our reason there, and, and then our, our staff can go ahead and work with them and try to find a place in Benita that is. Would that be all right?
Mayor? Yeah, I'm uncomfortable with even, I think staff has explored Benita Nature Place and came back saying, "Not a good idea."
I haven't heard them say that.
Okay, all right, all right, all right, fine, Mayor. But I do, I do hope that through our, you know, we have this economic development incentive money on Old 41. The photographer definitely needs some help at Everglades Wonder Gardens. We want to make sure that's saved. It's had a history of having animals there. We have economic development incentive money. They're saying they're drawing 10,000 to 12,000 people. Hello, Old 41. I don't know if we can help that, investigate that process, see if that's a potential even from the get-go, you know?
Yeah, my concern with regards to the Wonder Gardens, it is not even close to the size they're looking for. They've got two and a half acres now. I believe the Wonder Gardens is...
Four.
Three, four, and they're looking for something significantly larger than that for their future needs. That's my understanding. Is that correct?
We would like to improve our current situation. If we could get more land, yes. We don't, we definitely don't want to go smaller than our habitats, but there are other ways to enhance the habitats for animals, but if we're tied into certain enclosures that are already existing at the Wonder Gardens, that might be an issue.
Yeah, and I don't know that that is, but I would like to see it, something, you know, just take a look and see if that might work for you temporarily until you find another piece of land to, I know you have 20 acres in North Bellmead, but, and why is that not working for you?
We were looking for some, we determined that zoning was a challenge there, even though we went to Collier County prior to purchasing that land. They're not really sure how to zone us out there. There are some overlays and things that are concerns out there that they've added to that area, because there's nothing like us that exists out there, and they're classifying us the same as a zoo, so they're not totally opposed to working with us, but they don't have all the answers, because they haven't gone through that process yet. So it's been a bit of a challenge to try and make headway on that property, and we'd be building from the ground up, which was some of the incentive as far as moving up this way, if there were some resources available to maybe not have to start it as at-ground level. Plus, you're more centrally located, you're very welcoming as far as the animals go. From our responses, and I know you're hearing the negatives, because the people who aren't happy about the idea are going to speak up, we have not been publishing the fact that we have been in communication with you, so some of the people who maybe would have been supportive have not had an opportunity to speak up either, because we haven't been out there campaigning for that.
Well, and again, Counsel, I would suggest that we don't need to decide where today. We can, we can actually agree that we would like, we would love for you to be in Benita Springs somewhere, and are you okay with, with staff working with them?
Absolutely.
Is that'll be all right?
Ben, may I say something? Look, do you have, is there any space at the Naples Zoo that's large enough to handle? I mean, that's, that's really, we're talking about wild animals, and I understand the compassion and understanding to pet wolves or pet any kind of animal, but they are wild or they're supposed to be in their own environment, and I do, I like, I like... And I do, I like, I look at, on TV, excuse me, a lot of programs related to nature, and especially the ones in Montana and Alaska and all those places where they roam free.
Where they're shooting them right now?
Well, there's an overpopulation, at least that's the information that's on the TV. And there has to be an appropriate place, okay? And now, in Benita, we certainly have a lot of land. But by the same token, when you attempt to change a zoning or something like that, we also have the potential of having other citizens or people that own property may not be so convinced that they want a, something like you have. I understand your understanding of the animals and all that. But it's much deeper for me in terms of watching them run free as I've seen them on television. And in a larger environment, it's wonderful to see them be free and do what they have to do as wild animals. But I, so close to residential areas and commercial businesses is somewhat, I would think, difficult to find.
We're ganging up on you here.
That's okay. If I can just say something in response to what you were talking about. We really would appreciate, and Mayor Nelson has already been out there. We'd appreciate you being able to come out and see our animals and see how they are socialized animals. They are not wild animals per se. They are animals that have been kept in captivity or born into captivity all their lives. They're born and bred in captivity. They're not, they don't have that wild instinct that you would have on the nature programs that you see. And we really feel that you would get a much better idea of what we are about and our animals and how we could fit into the community if you came out and saw us and took one of our tours.
I have not done that, but there was a reason why I didn't come. Because I didn't think it was appropriate for me as a councilman to come and do that. And that was my own point of view.
Well, your question, like your point that a lot of people share is, why aren't they running free? Well, our guys have never been free and they don't have any wild skills. They weren't raised by wild mothers in the wild, and they wouldn't make it. So, if they don't, that's part of the niche we fall into. If they don't go to us, then they don't go anywhere. We'd love to return to the wild, but they can't do that.
Okay, yes, Steve?
Yes, forgive me if I missed it, but how many acres are you looking for?
We're currently on two and a half acres, of which we're only able to use about one and a half acres. We had purchased 20 acres. I don't know that we have a set amount in our head, you know, as far as what we would or would not do. But we obviously want to improve our situation if we're putting this much effort, money into relocating, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, just to take Benita Nature Place off the table.
There's a motion to remove the nature place from consideration. And there's a second by Janet.
By Bill?
By Big Heart?
Bill did too.
Third by Bill and a fourth by me.
I'm sorry, I can only take one at a time here, okay? If you want to have a third and a fourth, well, we can do that. There's a motion by Martha, it's a second by Janet. Any other discussion?
Just for discussion, I'd like our Economic Development Council, the staff, the mayor, whoever needs to, to help them locate in Benita.
Well...
If at a suitable location other than this one, just take that off the table.
Do you want to add that to the motion?
Yes, Mayor.
That you would like to have staff and the resources of Benita go ahead and help them find another location?
Yes, Mayor, I would.
Okay.
I'll agree.
Okay. All right, there's been a motion, a second. Another comment, roll call.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Nope.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
No.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Good, my no vote was that I didn't want to take anything off there until we'd looked at it more certainly. I'm very supportive of what you do. I don't want you to think that was that.
Amen.
Okay? Good, and good luck. And our staff will be very helpful for you. Good luck.
Okay.
Okay, on we go to the consent agenda. Counsel, what do you want to do? We have a sizable consent agenda.
Yes, we do.
Huge, huge, all the way through A through O. Take your time for a minute. And is there anything on there you'd like to remove? Time for 30 seconds, exactly?
Aye, Ben.
You would like to remove I? Okay, is there anything else anyone would like to remove?
Just a comment on E. That's not a good, just a comment.
The one about crew, just, sorry, I don't know what number that is.
About crew, which, oh, about the special event permit?
Yeah.
You want to remove that?
I just want to discuss it, yes.
Okay.
That's Jay.
All right, and that would be Martha?
I'll make a motion to approve the remainder.
Second.
Motion to approve the remainder, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Okay, Steve, our item E.
Item E, yes, just one last comment on the Shangri-La Road. I remain concerned about a half mile of paved road with no slowdown, no stops, two entryways from residential areas. Even though we intend to have a reasonable speed limit on that, it has the potential for disaster. I'm asking the engineering people to take one more look before they clear it to say, we don't need stop signs, yield signs, we don't need speed bumps, roundabouts, or anything else. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, and I would add to that too. I'm supportive of that mainly because if you recall, Dean Street and Mathis Street, neither one of those had a stop sign. And there was some resistance to doing that. But that has been incredibly successful. It is, it has really allowed those three-way stops that we put in there. It took a while for people to get used to, but they have worked really well so far as to allow people to get out onto the thing. It has had a slight traffic coming effect. So, if you would look for staff, I know the DOT is not predisposed to do such things, but if you would take another look at that, that would be great. All right?
Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion to approve?
I'll prove it, yeah.
A motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Okay, and now we are to Bill, item I.
Thank you, Ben. Question I have is, the first question is, do we have any history of this particular company doing business in the city of Benita Springs in reference to these kind of rock concerts?
This particular company has Laura Taylor Communications Manager. And they have not hosted any events in the city of Benita Springs yet.
And what cost do we have to the city for this? This is major, there are five or six of them?
There is no additional cost other than the electricity, just like we do for any other concerts, and also for our parks and recreation staff. But that will be reimbursed by the company.
Okay.
Does anyone that's supporting this or running this live in Benita Springs?
No, they do not.
Okay, thank you.
But they will allow for local bands and acts that may be in the Benita Springs area to be a part of their concerts.
Thank you.
I'm going to invite the young lady to come on, why don't you come on up here? Come up here. Hi. Why don't you tell us a little about your organization or what you're planning on doing?
Sure, sure. Again, my name is Tiffany McQuade. I'm here on behalf of McQuade Marketing. We are based in Naples. And this particular concert series kind of has a life of its own. It started in Naples. We expanded to Fort Myers Beach by request. We are now doing a similar rockin' series at some various country clubs in town on their driving range. So, it's called Rockin' on the Range. We are also doing a series of teen dances, Come On Let's Rock, for the Children's Museum of Naples. So, we have found success in the rockin' brand, so to speak, in being able to bring a free concert with tribute-style bands to the areas that we go in. So, what we're looking to do, we kind of felt in talking with people in various areas and communities, that this is something that perhaps would be a good event for Benita. It is, again, a free concert. It's totally sponsor-driven. And we are partnered with the Amakli Foundation. So, it's just a good, kind of fun event. It starts at 5:00. We have a warm-up band that starts shortly after 5:00. And that's always a local group. And then, starting at 7:00, we have our main band and they go until 9:00. And they cut off directly at 9:00. My team of specialists come in as fast as we, you know, as fast as we can get the entire facility cleaned up. We're very quick, we're very professional about it, and we have strong experience in doing events as well, other than just these, so.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Just, yeah, I guess, just with the children and the children's concerts, can you elaborate on that a little bit? What?
At the Children's Museum? Actually, our first one is this coming Saturday at the Children's Museum of Naples. It's called Come On Let's Rock. We are partnered with Clear Channel Media, which we are also partnered with for the concert series that we do around town. And it's just kind of a teen dance, opening a different sector to a safe environment for the museum, aside from what they would normally draw.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, teen dance, we've been trying to do that for a while in town.
Oh, really?
We used to have teen dance, don't we, Mayor? Used to go to those as a young whippersnapper.
I'm not that old.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, actually, I mean, yeah, we're, yeah. We don't have any experience with you yet, and we're giving away six, seven Friday nights. Would you be amenable to doing teen dances in town?
Of course we would. Each concert series that we currently have scheduled, I'm assuming you have the schedule, each week is, or each month, the first Friday of the month is a different tribute band. The first one actually kicks off with an Eagles tribute. We actually had them in Naples as well, and they're very, very good. If you closed your eyes, you wouldn't know any different. Followed by the Beatles tribute. We have been given an option that was just presented to me yesterday to replace them with a Michael Jackson, who has backup dancers and everything, and does a first set as kind of Jackson 5, second set is the MJ that we know.
Is that because he bought the rights to the Beatles song, or is that for a different reason?
That's, no, different reasons. So, that could potentially be an option. But then we have a Bon Jovi tribute followed by Jimmy Buffett, Journey, and Billy Joel.
Okay, this might be for teens over 50.
All right, well, let's not get too far off course here. She's got a specific request at the time.
Yeah, yes.
As far as a special, let's keep it towards a special event here, if you will.
Okay.
Any other questions in that regard? Steve?
Yes, Laura, I got to ask you this. That will conflict with our Veterans Memorial Day with the Vietnam War on a Friday in November?
We, on the schedule...
Maybe it's the first Friday.
Nothing should conflict. We've double-checked all of our dates, and we will not approve anything to conflict with any existing events.
Okay, thank you.
Good, good.
While Laura's...
Yes?
Another comment for Laura. Can we make sure that our artist cottages are open these Friday nights?
Absolutely, we've already notified them that this may be a potential, as long as you approve.
Yep, thank you.
See how easy it is to work there?
Yes, thank you.
Anyway, any other comments?
Is it, are you a for-profit or non-profit?
McQuade Marketing itself is a for-profit corporation, but we are aligned with the Amakli Foundation as well, which is a non-for-profit.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry?
Does that help kids in Benita?
Amakli Foundation, actually, I have the director here if you'd like to ask her some questions. Would you like?
This is Liz.
Thank you, Tiffany. Good morning, Councilman and Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to come up here and talk about the Amakli Foundation for a few moments. The Amakli Foundation is a not-for-profit organization that began about 21 years ago. And it originally began as a grant-awarding foundation. But today, we offer specific programs to try to help kids out of poverty and move into, to become economically independent, basically. So, we have support programs that are educationally based, scholarship programs. And Amakli is a community that impacts the whole region of Southwest Florida. The workforce that we see in Southwest Florida, in Lee County, in Collier County, Hendry County, comes from Amakli. Our goal is to change the face of what that workforce looks like. Not just our lawn workers and our maids and our service industry, but to help the next generation develop the skills so that they can be productive citizens here in our community and contributing to the economic growth. And it's very exciting. So, that's what our foundation does. I'm very appreciative of the work that McQuade Marketing does. The series that did happen, and just on a side note, over in Naples, was extremely successful, extremely successful. And I think for any community, this is an opportunity to bring people together for a good cause. The other thing is that McQuade Marketing has also been kind enough to share proceeds with the Amakli Foundation, which helps us build our programs and scholarships. So, if there's anything specifically that I could address, I'd be happy to.
Yes, we have farmworkers in town at Pueblo Benito. And I'm wondering if you're going to be raising money in our town? I don't know, is this going to raise money?
Just so you know, the concert series, in order to keep it free, we do it sponsor-driven. So, all of the costs of the bands each week, the sound, any, in this case, we don't have to do a ton of lighting. But the staff and all of that comes through sponsorship. So, yes, we are hoping to raise funds, definitely.
From sponsors.
From sponsors, correct. So, the overflow over our costs.
And the people who come to enjoy the concert will be people from Benita Springs.
Correct, correct. One thing that we...
And it will be free to them.
Yes, sir, right. And one thing that we did notice in Naples, which where we were located, all the restaurants there were slam-packed out the door every night of our concerts. So, they would go eat first, then go to the concert, or go after the concert. So, it was, there was a huge impact to the businesses surrounding. So, we're hoping to bring the same thing here.
Benita's always had a connection with Amakli because many of our farmworkers go there. And also, many of them come to live here, and it's sort of interchangeable. Some of our tomato workers and stuff go there because we don't have tomato farms anymore. So, but they live in Benita. So, I hope that there's a potential that there can be some, you know, networking with Carlos Lozano at Pueblo Benito. You probably know Carlos.
Absolutely. And let me just address that, because let me tell you one of my goals and actually vision for our organization is that, because we have been building programs that really, in measuring the outcomes and how effective and what we're doing, and we really have good results. My goal is to help any other community with a program that we've been developing and a model that works. So, I am always happy to talk to anybody who we could help along the way and share our knowledge and share what we're doing and help any other community.
Awesome, can I get your card?
Absolutely.
Great.
Okay, right. Counsel, do you have any other questions before?
Motion to approve it?
Motion to approve? Is there a second? There's motion and a second.
Second with a quick discussion. Any chance of rotating in the Rolling Stones?
I can work on that. I can work. And I would be willing to talk, if you need help with the teen dance, we'd be thrilled to help.
Thank you very much. There's a motion and a second. I take it no other discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longhart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, Martha, you had a question on item?
Jay.
Well, yeah, you know, I don't do this anymore about pulling somebody up, but if I could have Brenda Brooks, the Executive Director of CREW, just tell us, it's an opportunity for advertising for CREW, Mayor, I hope you can please forgive me. Can you tell us what CREW is and why do we want to have this concert in town?
Certainly. Thank you for asking me to come up. My name is Brenda Brooks. I'm the Executive Director of CREW Land and Water Trust. CREW stands for Corkscrew Regional Ecosystem Watershed. It's a 60,000-acre watershed, and it is our largest intact watershed in southwest Florida. We, 2014 for this concert is super exciting for us. We only do two fundraisers a year, and this is by far our largest one. The concert for 2014, our year is coming up, we will be celebrating 25 years of preserving and protecting this watershed. As Mayor Nelson has always pointed out, Benita Springs should be the gateway to CREW, and we are certainly working on that. We currently have three trailheads that are accessible to the public, so there's public recreation. On the upside of that, when you take away that part of it, it really is all about water. CREW is really all about water. So, it's water protection, water storage, water quality, and setting aside these 60,000 acres are extremely important. You guys are so important, because you're just right in the center. Again, coming back to the gateway of CREW, this does span Lee and Collier County. The funds for this particular fundraiser support our environmental education programs 100%. Last year, want to say that we had nearly, it was over 6,000 children out on guided hikes on a field trip. And that doesn't even take into account all the families that come out and individuals that come out to all of our trailheads. I will say that I have been working very hard with the South Florida Water Management District, and I would, I would be hopeful to say that within the next two years, we will have our first trailhead in Lee County off of Benita Beach Road.
Yay! Awesome. Sweet and awesome. Thank you so much for coming out of the woods to visit us.
Thank you. And thank you for considering our co-sponsorship once again. This is a big thing for us.
This is a big thing for us, because this 60,000 acres is north of Worthington, Palmira, all of that, and just east of Benita Grand. We are the gateway to CREW, and CREW is an incredible asset. It is the, if you will, the central park of south Florida. If you look from an aerial, it is the reason why we're going to be doing so much better than so many other places in the future. So, thank you for doing what you do, and I'm, make a motion to support this 100%.
I'll second.
Oh, you mean the concert?
Yes, sir. And CREW.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
And, and they partner at Benita Nature Place.
So, there's a motion and a second to approve the special events permit. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Longhart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
I'm happy to support this partner of Benita Nature Place.
Okay. And now, we are done with that part of it, and we are to second reading and public hearing of the following ordinance. Public comment will be allowed. Go right ahead. Audrey?
Yes. The first ordinance is actually an ordinance and petitions, and I'm going to explain the petition in a few moments, but let me read the title block and to the record. This is an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, extending the territorial limits of the City of Benita Springs, Florida by the annexation of unincorporated tracts of land owned by WCI Communities and Pelican Landing Community Association, lying contiguous to and being in the same county as the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, located in Section 7 and 8, Township 47 South, Range 25 East, 135.75 more or less acres, assignment to City Council District 1, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. In addition to the ordinance, and prior to adoption of the ordinance, City Council is required to review the petitions, and you have two petitions attached to the packet. They look very similar. The first one is WCI Communities, and then following that is Pelican Landing Community Association. I just want to go through the proposed policy that is in our administrative code for dealing with annexations, or guidelines on how to handle the petition. The petitioner's presentations shall occur first, and petitioner shall have up to 20 minutes uninterrupted to present their petition. I don't know if we need 20 minutes, but they each, and I would recommend in this particular case, because we are doing two petitions at once, having both presenters come up first. At that point, staff can provide an analysis to City Council using up to 20 minutes. The public would then have a right to comment with up to five minutes, and then the petitioners would have five minutes to present any final summary, at which point, the public hearings on the petitions would be closed, and City Council could discuss the motion and then vote. We could also entertain, because we are doing it the same day as the ordinance, holding the ordinance and having the public comment on the ordinance, if not on the petition itself at that moment also, so to expedite. Without further ado, if Ms. Montgomery and Mr. Hart have any presentation?
Yep. Would the applicants like to come up?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Tom Hart. I am the General Counsel for Pelican Landing Community Association, which is the HOA for Pelican Landing. The, this, this project was initiated by Pelican Landing. We appreciate that WCI is our partner with this, because the, the purpose for Pelican Landing Association was to get its marina amenity, which it recently acquired, into the city, because all of the other amenities that the association has are in the city, and we have a track record. We, we enjoy working with the city. We appreciate the help that we've received from staff over the years. And so, they wanted to, the association wanted to get its marina into the city. And of course, WCI has some land that's in between the marina and the rest of the city, and so their assistance was needed, and I think they're going to speak to you as well. This private, this marina facility is used almost exclusively as the marina shuttle base for the Pelican Landing residents to access their beach park. There are no residences on the property, and we would appreciate your support, and I'm here if you have other questions. The, the Association Board is meeting concurrently. It's just their regular monthly meeting, and so they sent their lawyer. I guess they felt I was expendable from their regular meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is, is it representative for WCI, like speak this time?
Good morning, for the record, Neil Montgomery. Everything Mr. Hart just said is correct, and we agree with.
There you go. All right, well, I got to tell you, I'm going to write this, I'm going to write this moment down. Neil Montgomery. No, 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 no. It's okay. I know, you do quite well. All right, well, good. All right, that's comment. Staff, do you have anything to add here? Does staff have anything to add in regard to this?
Mr. Mayor, we have taken a look at this for some time now, as you're probably aware, and we're in favor of this proposal. Recommend approval.
Okay. Counsel, if you have any questions before we go to public comment? All right, this time we'll entertain public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to either one of these proposals, please come forward.
Yeah, Rick Steinmeier, this will add to the number of gated communities, the number of people living in gated communities in the city of Benita Springs. They are cash cows. They will be able to help support downtown Benita Springs and the 30% of the people that don't live in gated communities. So, if they're willing to pay the taxes, we're willing to develop our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Yes, Alex Grant. One thing, this is a peripheral thing, but I like the City Council to try to remember to be good neighbors with another community, Estero, and let us, I know they're very concerned about this annexation, but we need to be able to work with our neighbors, and let's not be too greedy. Thank you.
Anyone else this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of this. Would the applicant like to have to say anything else before we take, okay? Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion, and I want to make a comment after the second, please.
Okay, we have motion, and we have a second. And, go ahead.
Just two points for clarification. This has been spun several different ways. This clearly was brought forward to the city by the residents and the owners of these properties. Secondly, it has never been a question, an issue of cash for this city. The issue's always been one of allowing the residents of that area who were left out of the city when the city limits were struck, to have the opportunity to vote to be in or out of the city of Benita Springs. For me, as a resident of Pelican Landing, it's an issue of many neighborhoods, different cultures in those neighborhoods, one community. That's what they'll be voting for, and that's why I made that motion.
Mayor?
Yes, and I, I would agree. This has nothing to do with greed. It has nothing to do with land grab. It has nothing to do with taking over the planet. It has none, none of that. This is about self-determination. People have a right. We don't own property other than the city, actual city properties and things that we have. It's the property owners. There are property owners, and property owners have property rights, and one of the rights that they should have is the right to choose to form municipal government they want to be in. That's all this is about. Very simple. All right? Whoever that was?
Mayor?
All right, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, and may I say, I agree with completely what you both have said, and I also want to congratulate you for reaching across the median of Coconut Road, so to speak, to engage our neighbors, brothers and sisters to the north, who one day will maybe have home rule, which I'm all for home rule. And I think it's a good thing if Estero incorporates. I think it's about where it is. For us, old timers have been around here. We, and some, some of us in the audience, you know, have a feeling about historically what has been what. New people who've come here have a different opinion. Okay, we can disagree in opinions, but I, I agree that we do in a neighborly fashion. You have reached your hand across the road, so to speak, and, and I appreciate that, and I'd love to see them reach back and shake hands, and, and let's continue to work on those things that are important. The hospital, for one, really important for our communities. You know, the quality of our communities. We're going to be working together for years to come. So, let's remember, this is just a little blip in the road for some of the sore feelings that are, may be out there on either side, but we're going to continue to work together, and I thank you for reaching, reaching out, Ben. And, and I, I agree. I think the buffer can be somewhat, you know, it doesn't have to be a hard and fast rule, but they need to reach across to us, and we need to keep talking.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Peter?
And I just want to say, Steve, you've done an amazing job on this, and you've taken your lumps. And I just want to kind of hone this down a little bit to maybe some good common sense here. When you look at your neighborhood, Steve, that is divided, people that live in your community, people that when you're leaving, depending on which way you get out, whether it's Coconut Road or Old 41, that you're driving past, that actually can't vote for you, that have their trash picked up on the same day, then have their recycles picked up on the same day, that you represent in all effect, but you don't represent them, because your community is split. I just want to reel in a little bit of common sense. Think of the communities that we live in, or the streets that we live on, and say, oh, that gentleman across the street, well, he doesn't get to vote for me, or I shouldn't, you know. I just want to add a little common sense to this and bring this into perspective.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I made a motion and a second.
We have motion and a second, and another comment?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Montgomery, I just would like to ask you if you would kindly answer this question. Dr. Steve has gone through a lot. Did anybody from the city twist your arm to force you to come to the city?
No, sir. What Mr. Hart said is absolutely correct. This is the Pelican Landing Community Association, the residents who wanted all of their amenities in the same jurisdiction.
That's for the record. Thank you.
Okay. Yes?
Thank you. I just wanted all the City Council comments, but I just want to make clarification for the minute, that the motion is to review and approve both petitions and the ordinance. So, you're doing one shot at one time?
That's correct. That is the motion.
Well done. That's the motion. If there's no other comment, roll call.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longhart?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. And we have, now have an ordinance to the City of Benita Springs, amending a portion of the City of Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan.
Yes, and this is?
As yet again.
Let me read the title block and to the record. This is an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, amending a portion of the City of Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan as adopted by Ordinance Number 0216, as amended so as to amend the future land use map for Amendment CPA 13-04897-BOS, known as YMCA Comprehensive Plan Amendment, which is located in Section 31, Township 47 South, Range 26 East, to redesign approximately 26.99 more or less acres of land from density reduction, groundwater resource, to public semi-public, providing for transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency, providing a conflicts clause and severability clause, and providing for an effective date and for other purposes. This is your second reading. Now, this ordinance, you haven't seen it in a while. The last time you saw it was during your transmittal stage on June 5th of this year, 2013. Jackie will go through the history and explain everything. Just for technical, at this point, I just want to state that I have reviewed the affidavit of publication. It is legally sufficient, but this will be your final hearing at this point. And Jackie, if you can give the history.
Good morning, for the record, Jacqueline Genson with Community Development. As Ms. Vance did accurately state, in June, you did allow staff to go ahead and transmit this Comprehensive Plan Amendment to the Department of Economic Opportunity in accordance with state statute. Did go through an expedited review process, where appropriate review agencies went ahead and provided comments, which were none. So, happy to report that we don't need to make any changes to the proposed amendment, so that's why it's before you today for final adoption.
Okay, all right. And Counsel, do you have any questions for Jacqueline?
I have a question for the attorney.
Okay, so I understand this is to help to comply with settlement agreement through the parties after the zoning of the YMCA, the Wildlife Federation, the Sierra Club, the da-da-da-da, Responsible Growth Management Coalition. Okay, all the names. There were two conditions, there were several conditions on there. So, once we get this done, do that, will those conditions still hold up, like this will always be a YMCA? Because that's basically what saved our YMCA from being sold to somebody else.
As far as the settlement agreement and any enforcement of the settlement agreement, that would be something that the parties, we were not parties to the settlement agreement. If it is something as to semi-public and public use, it could change, but it would have to be a semi-public or public use. It could not change to a use that is not fall within that comp plan classification.
Yes. I thought we were doing this to fulfill the part of, one of the terms, the settlement agreement.
That's correct.
Right. So, if it's not between us, then why are we doing it? Anyhow, we're doing it. Okay, we're here. I just, I guess you can't answer my question about whether, it kind of saved our necks, right, that we still have the YMCA, the settlement agreement, didn't you think?
Well, for the record, Jacqueline Genson, it's also the zoning ordinance itself, but that doesn't preclude, you know, someone going forth and amending that zoning ordinance either. But they have to be consistent with the land use plan and any zoning amendment that they propose.
I'm not against that, okay? What I, what I'm concerned about is, we had an organization that was willing to sell our Y. And the reason, it's a somebody other than a Y. And the reason we have a Y is because this little sheet of paper got pulled out and said, hey, you can't have it as anything other than a Y. So, will, will this jeopardize that in any way?
First of all, it was not the settlement agreement. It was the zoning verification.
Okay, good, thanks.
But, so.
Are we good then?
But understand that people, whenever you approve any zoning, regardless of whether we're talking the YMCA or comp plan change, you know, other people can purchase the property and ask for something else. We can't preclude due process, you know, for people.
Okay, good point, but right now, it just says, without changing the zoning, it can just remain a Y. Is that correct?
I would believe that's correct.
And if they could have a school, if they came forward and said, we want to have a Y school.
I think, more appropriately, it, it's a piece of property that's owned by a person. I don't think that anybody in the world can say, these people are the only people that can ever own that piece of property. I don't think, I'll have to check the Constitution on that one, but I don't think that that, we have the power and ability to do that. It can be a commensurate use, boys' club, girls' club, whatever fits in with the same kind of use. Would you agree?
Yes, I think staff can make that determination.
Okay, I don't think that, I don't think it is, or nor should we be in the business of designing things that only these people can ever own this property, no matter how strongly we feel about it. There are other ways to get about that, but.
But I, I think that's what the zoning ordinance might have said, and that's just what I'm trying to say, is like.
I don't think any zoning ordinance will ever say, is that the, the particular person is the only person who can ever own this.
If you all remember, whenever I brief you, the day you go onto council, and I've briefed council several times, whenever you do any zoning or any comp plan, you don't ever look at who the person is. You look at the
Sure.
use of the land, because the person can change. I mean, people, or organizations dissolve or die. You know, times change, so you never go by who the entity is and whether you think that's a good entity. You go whether the use is appropriate. And if you recall, in 2002, when we were doing the, and the reason why there is a settlement agreement was, it was a quasi-public entity, and that's, was permissible in the DRGR, and that was a very heated situation with council, because council wasn't sure, you know, it was, it was not an easy vote for them, you know. And at that point, council said, yes, we will allow the YMCA to go at this location as conditioned with all these conditions within DRGR. The consistency to the comp plan challenge then occurred with a side agreement worked out between the YMCA and the environmental groups, the Sierra and Conservancy, at which point, one of the conditions was, when the city gets around to amending its comprehensive plan, make these changes within. The YMCA never pushed it. The environmental groups did not push it in 2002, when we went about, of course, making changes to DRGR is not the most easiest thing to do anyway. And at that point, it was set aside. This is a city-initiated, this is not the YMCA coming in asking to make the change.
I understand.
This is a city-initiated to conform with it, but also to make sure any use on that property remains a public or semi-public use, as opposed to a DRGR use.
There you go.
Okay, my last question, Mayor.
Yes.
Part of that settlement agreement was the YMCA coordinating with Lee County 2020 during their site permit to incorporate the used environmental lands, blah, 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 kiosks. I don't see the kiosk. I don't see the kiosk, but I would like us to get that kiosk up. So 2020, Benita Nature Place, you know, I'm sure we can work something out. Yakity yak.
Staff did go ahead and put that in the staff report. We had been in conversation with 2020 back when the ZVL was done. They just don't have funds to go ahead and open up that property yet. So that's why the trailhead and information is not available.
Right, there's nowhere to go right now, right?
Correct.
No, I understand that, but we do have Nature Place, and so maybe we can get the kiosk up so when that trailhead gets in there and all that kind of stuff, in the meantime, they can do Nature Place.
Okay. At this time, thank you for, Jackie. We're going to go ahead and take public comment on this item. Any of the members of the public wish to speak at this time, please come forward.
Yes, Alex Grant again. I'm going to put my soil scientist hat on at this time. I looked at the attachment, number one, the Soil Survey, and I have in front of me Hydrick soils of Florida Handbook, second edition. And in that area, just for your clarification, the Felder Fine Sand Depresional is a hydric soil. Hallendale Fine Sand is a hydric soil. Immaculate sand is a hydric soil. Malabar Fine Sand, hydric soil. Panetta Fine Sand is a hydric soil. And the Papano Fine Sand Depresional is a hydric soil. That's all I have to tell you. So, you know, water, water, sand holds water in heavy rain areas. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Seeing none. Council, what's your pleasure? We wish to go ahead and pass this?
Yep.
Motion? Is there a second?
I will second that. Can I ask if we can add a condition?
Yes, you can ask. Yes, go right ahead.
Sure. With the assistance of the city, that they erect the environmental kiosk for environmental use only and advertise for Benita Nature Place programs and their own environmental programs, whatever, until the Conservation 2020 trailhead's up.
I would think that this, since this is a city-initiated comprehensive plan and they haven't asked us to do this, I don't know how you can condition that, but it, that you can't condition people to do something if they are not actually a party of that? Yes.
Understand that part of this comp plan amendment is land that the city owns. So you're conditioning yourself and you certainly can do so if you want, because remember, we're part owners. We acquired some of the YMCA property.
Yes, John.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For a future land use map amendment, which is what we're dealing with right now, is simply changing a designation from one to another. This is very different from a zoning application, which you would be able to condition and place certain requirements upon a property. In this particular case, the only way you would be able to change any type of, of specific requirement or condition would be to amend the text of the comprehensive plan, which would then place all of the properties under public and semi-public under the same requirements. Those type of requirements or regulations are appropriate at the zoning and carried out through the development order and building permit level. We, we will work with YMCA for the kiosk and make sure that it stays on their radar when it's time for them to construct and there is a trailhead for them to, to go through. But until that time-
There you go. Because it's a zoning thing, and so what you would do is-
Yes, sir.
-code enforcement or your zoning department outside of this comprehensive plan, they would be the ones in charge of enforcing that, and you can go remind them of that.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Okay. The settlement agreement, we brought this forward, we initiated this to fulfill the settlement agreement.
Well-
How can we help the other part be fulfilled? Because that trailhead isn't going to happen across the street anytime soon.
Well, we just, we just told you that it's up to the zoning department. They are going to contact them and remind them that this is a, this is a part of the zoning, that they have to do this when there's an actual, when there's an actual place to go.
Yes, sir.
We have Benita Nature Place.
This worked well because, one, there was a, a settlement agreement that required the YMCA to remove this property from the DRGR designation. But it also worked in the fact that you had a YMCA, which as we've already stated and as we're still seeing today, was controversial in this future land use designation. And as opposed to using this as a precedent, removing this property out of the DRGR and placing it into a more appropriate designation, then takes away any potential argument in the future, which has been used in the past, that a YMCA being appropriate in the DRGR should therefore allow other uses.
So, and let's, let's do it this way. So, so that Martha is better able to articulate what she's trying to get done. Why don't we do this at council members' items? And that way you can make a request of staff to go ahead and, and forward what you want them to do, because it really has nothing to do with this comprehensive plan amendment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Is that correct?
And, and we have no problems going forward and, and working on making sure that it's constructed or modifying it if the trailhead is 15 years away, if there's another type of, of kiosk or informational display we should have.
Fifteen years away. I, I, I get the mayor's point. I understand it. And this actually illustrates his point, that you don't put anything specific in language sometimes because they specifically put in Lee County 2020 without realizing that we already have a trailhead. It's called the Benita Trail. It goes to the Nature Place, and that is not in the, the zoning. But I'd like to see if, it's sort of the idea of the zoning. How can we get that done, Mayor? I, I will bring it up at council member items with the good people at Community Developing. Help me and us, all of us, get this done.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sure they would be, I'm sure the YMCA would love to cooperate and have the sign out there.
Great.
Directed into the Nature Place or wherever. Okay?
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Where are we at? Has there been a motion in a second?
Vocal.
We have motion in a second. Any other conversation? Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Slacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Aye.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Okay, Audrey, what else you got for us?
One more ordinance. This is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs to repeal in its entirety, Benita Springs Ordinance Number zero zero ten, last amended by ordinance number oh nine dash fifteen, to replace the personnel management system of the city of Benita Springs, providing for an effective date. This is second reading. Public comment will be taken. I have reviewed the affidavit of publication. It is legally sufficient. In your errata sheet, I apologize, the charter requires that we have as, when we repeal an ordinance, we show all the language crosshatched. So we have the entire personnel management crosshatched as an attachment, and it's in the errata.
Okay, good. Counsel, do you have any questions? Okay, we're going to go to public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak to this item, please come forward about the personal management system. No? Okay. Public comment is closed. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
So move.
We have motion. Is there a second? Motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Just real quick, looking at the employee survey, I hope that when we rewrite this, that some of the improvements will be noted in this manual. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Slacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Aye.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay, we are to public comment. Audrey, you don't have anything else, right?
Yes, sir.
For that, on that part? We are public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak at this time on any item, please come forward.
Can we just draw the sign for you, Mayor?
Hi, Deborah McLean with the Banana Peel. And I don't know if you're aware of it, but out near Nature Place, we do have a coven of warlocks and witches who moon the moon at full moon. And I think that we should not be adding wolves to our warlocks and witches. Hopefully, they will sell their property and move on. That's a step backwards to bring in these type of things when we're on the edge of such wonderful things. Six hundred and fifty-seat Southwest Florida Cultural Center, a performing arts center of four hundred, our charter school, and then we have the art league. And we're beginning to step up, and we should not go backwards and be hand-feeding gators to have chickens in the street. And we just shouldn't go backwards. Thank you.
Very much. Next speaker, please. Anyone else?
Fred Forbes. I'm here representing Hunter Ridge-
I'm sorry, this isn't the time for you to speak. I'm just kidding.
Oh, you are?
I'm just messing with you.
You're messing with me.
Sorry, go ahead.
We're at a interesting point in the, in Benita Springs, and I, I know that the economy's picking up. And I'm here to ask, you'll get a letter from Benita's stakeholders, but we want to see the architectural standards, siding standards, lighting standards, and landscape standards, at least upgraded for east I-75. You've got an area out there that's ripe for development, and I'm not opposed to development. I made a good living participating in that. But as it stands now, we could get a bu, a big box or something out there that would be ugly. And there's no reason for that because this is a, a place everybody's going to want to be. We've dodged a bullet in the past on a couple of big box stores that almost went there. Time is of the essence. You're going to go ahead with this big landscape, streetscape plan, which incidentally, I think will take roughly two years to do between design and full implementation. But, so I'm urging the city that to move forward and get, get going on that upgrading of those standards. So if we were to get a big retail establishment, which is inevitable, that we would get their premier architectural facade, not the standard box store, and, and, and something that would be consistent with the communities that are out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Hello.
My name is Scott DuVall. I'm here as the executive elder of Table of Grace Church. Currently, we're meeting in the Gateway Building, the one at the corner of Old Forty-One, Benita Beach Road, the old Colonial Bank Building. We've been there for about a year and a half. And a couple of weeks ago, we put the Maria's Building under contract. I then met with, with John Dolmier to talk to him about our wonderful ideas, and he reminded me that land development code was being, being amended, and I might, might have a problem. We might have a problem having a religious assembly because it was not a permitted use at that location. I then was heading out of town, so I asked some of our folks to come and, and, and ask you to consider amending the land development, the table with regarding to permitted uses for that location, the urban village subarea six A and one. It affects four properties. We were asking that religious use be a special exception, not permitted as a matter of right, because I think frankly, a church is probably not your long-term plan for downtown redevelopment. By making it a special exception, any approval could be conditioned, whether it's on a sunset provision or a, a specific amount of, of investment into the property, which we plan to do. And I think the message was communicated that we plan to have a restaurant there. Let me clarify that. Maria's is a tenant. They have a long lease in place until, with extensions up to 2020. And so Maria's will stay as a tenant if we, if we go forward with the purchase. However, it's our intention to use that as our church, not just as a restaurant where we happen to meet on Sundays. Without this special exception and then our ability to apply for that special exception, we will not buy that building. We will not invest in, in renovating it. So again, you'll be sitting with the Maria's Building, having no investment, two vacant lots across the street, and maybe a wolf sanctuary next door. So I think, you know, for purposes of downtown redevelopment, I'm a huge proponent of a crowd, attracts a crowd. Our hope is that we would get this special exception so that we can come in, renovate the facade, do some landscaping, beautify the building. Other people will see that and hopefully come in and take that wonderful property across the street, the bamboo village property across the street, off your hands, develop it into something wonderful, buy the land from the Pipers and make it a wolf sanctuary or something where people come. Zoo is a permitted use there, by the way. So I would ask for you to reconsider the decision that was made and, and have religious assembly as a permitted, as a special exception, the ability for a special exception for those areas. And I welcome any questions you have for clarification or what have you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Scott.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good morning. I'm Dave Gallagher from Cedar Creek. I'm just shooting from the dark here. I see item eleven C talks about a traffic control signal at the Riverview Corporate Center. I guess in principle, I'm opposed to more traffic lights being in Little Forty-One. The traffic, it's tough to get, you know, back and forth as it is. Adding another one, we really need a strong reason to do that. Thank you.
Good deal. Thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Seeing none. That is the end of our public comment portion for this time, and we are to the city attorney's report. Audrey.
Thank you. I have one item on the agenda. This is just to advise you that we did receive a notice of intent to file an action under the Burt Harris Act by Carter Pritchett. We have a copy of the letter that we received along with the appraisal, which is a statutory requirement. At this time, we're given a period of, I believe, a hundred and eighty days to take a look at the claim per the statute, a hundred day, to look at the claim under the statute. We did submit to Florida League of Cities, who will be covering it. However, I want to point out that, you know, you can always consider something different, and that's the plan of action that we recommend to you, but if you wanted to do something alternative, you had that open to you. I want to also point out that the Attorney General has pointed out that shade meetings, which means executive meetings that would be not something under the sunshine law, or it's under sunshine law, but it would be protected meeting, is not permitted under Burt Harris. It's only when an actual lawsuit is filed post-Burt Harris. So I would request that if you do have questions regarding this, that you just contact me individually, and I'll brief you as to the status of the case or with the city manager, whichever is your preference. But I would not want to really disclose too much on the record.
Okay. And, and for clarification, when you say provide direction to city attorney, you, you're looking for direction to defend?
Absolutely. To have Florida League of Cities defend the case.
Okay, good. Does everyone understand?
Yep.
And if you have any questions specifically, we need to go ahead and individually talk to city attorney. So I would entertain a motion for...
So moved. Followed staff recommendation.
Much improved. And second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Audrey, have anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. City manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a presentation again of the monthly financial reports, as well as the quarterly reports. And stand by for any questions. You figured you would have asked Lisa anyway, but you know, okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Lisa?
Here she comes.
Yes, sir.
Do you see any change in the next three months that indicate that our revenues are going to be reduced than what you have here?
From the collections that we've had, Lisa Grigspace, Finance Director for the record. No, sir, we have not had any indication of a reduction, especially not a significant one. We've presented the revenues to you all. There are some mild changes and little revenue, little revenue streams, but no significant changes, no, sir. Positive trends we've been seeing too.
Do you expect the expenditures to stay on the same?
That's a little more difficult to predict. Specifically, a lot of expenditures will be contractual, professional in nature. They're project-driven. The timing of those projects is subject to change. So it may be that some of those occur later on in the year. And that opposed to when you, as opposed to a regular recurring expense that happens equally monthly. So a lot of ours are project-driven. So it's kind of hard to, difficult to predict that, sir.
Thank you very much.
But we're optimistic that we'll be under budget on, from an operating expenditure standpoint. Yes, sir, we are optimistic.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks. What else you got, Carl?
The next three items will be handled by John Gucciardo.
John, what do you got for us?
The next item is actually a replacement item for one that we brought you back on June the 19th. We had originally proposed the purchase of the new phone systems for the city facilities over a three-year period. Two things happened since that time. One is that we anticipated the first payment would have been in this current fiscal year, based on delivery of the system in the current fiscal year. It doesn't look like that's going to happen now. Obviously, we're pretty close to October 1. And because of that, the first payment that we had budgeted for the issue would have been rolled over into the next year anyway. Second thing that happened is that the paperwork, which was delivered after we brought the original paperwork to council, was slightly different than we had first anticipated, and it had a financing component to it. The city is able to do financing under these terms. But after discussions with Audrey, there would be a different procedure involved. At that point, we got together with finance and the vendor made a determination that since the payments were going to be rolled over anyway into the next year, that it might just be cleaner, simpler to do it as a one-time purchase in the upcoming fiscal year. So we've moved dollars. Basically, it's the same dollars, just in a shorter time period for the same product. And we would recommend going ahead with that purchase.
All right, good. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
So move.
I got a motion, and I'll second it. Any other discussion? I think we have to have telephones, right? Okay, good. Roll call.
Learn how to transfer.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, John, what else you got?
The second item is related to our interest in developing economic development within the city. We've trying to respond favorably to requests from property owners and property managers at the Riverview Corporate Center. They have been struggling over about a 10-year period that I know of to try to get a traffic signal at that location, at their northern exit location.
Which is directly across from the...
Office Depot.
Fresh Market. Fresh Market. Fresh Market and the abandoned restaurant.
And I apologize, I've forgotten the name of that complex, but there is a complex right across that intersection.
Right.
They have had issues with traffic warrant criteria. This is at least an attempt to get the attention of the appropriate parties at FDOT to take into consideration issues such as safety of the vehicle passengers exiting that area. So to take into some interest, at least the criteria, other than the traffic warrant studies themselves, rather than just the numbers, basically. We don't know if this is going to be successful. We have indicated to them that we would assist them in their efforts. We're hoping that this letter of support lends some credence to their concerns. This letter of support will be followed by other similar letters from other entities that are supportive of this action, and we would recommend going ahead with that.
I want to just do a little preface on this, on why this has become important at this particular time. It's because of our economic development efforts and because I think that we've gotten a lot of input in the past, that people don't like it when Target goes out of business and when the other areas go out of business. And so in part of what we see is a renewal and a revitalization of that area, we would like to see there not be a chicken and an egg kind of a situation developed in a lot of these places where people aren't going to rent, where there's not good access. People, you know, you've noticed that where the, what was it, the Chinese restaurant was for a long time. It's staying vacant for a long time. A lot of those are hanging on just a little bit. A lot of it is access-driven. A lot of it's because, well, you know, we got to drive, you know, we've got to do a U-turn, or we've got to run across the other side of the road. It's dangerous there. I understand that every traffic light we add on the road, as does DOT, means that there's a possibility that you may have to stop one more time as you're trying to get to the beach or wherever it is. But what we're trying to do is balance that inconvenience to the public that they may have to pause with the safety and welfare and the economic well-being of that area. I think it's just as important for that area of New 41 to be successful and to have buildings and businesses that are prospering and that they're quality businesses, as it is to weigh that with the convenience that it may cause somebody to have to stop at another light. That's my own personal opinion, and that's why I would ask for counsel to at least support the efforts of having something reasonable done there. They've agreed to do the warrants. If it doesn't come anywhere near the warrants and never will, obviously, it's not going to happen. But if it is something that is can be proven that, yes, this area actually will meet warrants at some day, if in fact there was a way you could safely get to it, I think there's a good argument that it should be done. And that's what we would ask from you. Counsel?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Being involved with Source Interlink, I know that many of the employees there complained about not having a traffic light there because I've been in and out of there so many times, but during season, it is horrific. So I would support that.
Okay. Yes, I'm going to go to Bill, and then I'll come back to Martha.
Thank you.
Does anybody recall the light that wasn't there down at the Collier Lee County line?
Yeah.
And the grandfather and the grandson were killed?
Absolutely.
After a long period of time. To me, it's a safety issue first. And secondly, all the employees that work over there. So I think that's the most important thing, the safety. It's not a big deal for most, well, I think 99% to be able to stop at another red light. Does it get frustrating? Of course it does. But really, as long as we can preserve life, that's more important than any other consideration from my perspective. Thank you.
Well said, Bill. Martha, and then Pete.
Well, here's an interesting twist, is that I brought this up, I think, about four years ago.
I won the pool. I had right here. It says Martha's going to say that.
Yeah, okay. Who won the bet, okay? But the thing is, is that I remember John Spear telling me, or all of us, that Lisa was going to kill him if we didn't get a light up her way first, you know, at Cedar Creek.
Well, and she's tried, but it's tough.
Well, anyhow, I mean, you guys kind of convinced me not to go for this back then, and now you're changing your mind and you're going for it now. I think we need to look at possibly aerial view, what could be another alternative. I'm looking at it. I don't know that there is one, but I'm getting jammed up with letters from people from Benita Bay here, and I think they need to be part of the conversation.
Jammed up? How many would that be?
Well, they're coming in. I'm sure this is just the beginning of a large torrent of river flow or whatever of letters. I don't really want that to happen. But it is dangerous, but is there a way for us to find, because this is also going onto the bridge, you know, that's not like a good place to put a light going on a bridge. I don't like the light coming off the bridge down the other side. But I'm wondering if we could explore other options here. Are there any other options? Is it possible to put a frontage road along there so that it connects with Benita Bay Boulevard? It doesn't look like it, but I mean, we should explore other avenues than just putting a light up. So I will be voting against this proposal unless we'd like to say, let's look at all the options.
Well, part of what we've been doing with the DOT is looking at those options. And we were also working with BPAT from the Horizon Council. He's been working on this a long time, too. And you're right, this was discussed at one time, and you were a big proponent of trying to get that, to your credit, trying to get that done. And we ran into a similar problem. I think that we've had a little more success in that we've got some more receptive ears when it comes to the economic picture right now. And but, we have looked at every option that we can think of to where we can improve that situation, that being the biggest office complex in Lee County. Bigger, bigger than Hertz. It's bigger than Hertz. And across the street, I mean, they're in trouble. So I think that if there is, and I have to tell you, if this proves to be dangerous, DOT won't permit it. It just won't permit it. If it's something that's dangerous, if too close to the bridge, if it's too close to another traffic light, if it's got to cause more problems than what it's worth, they're not going to permit it. They're just not going to do it. So we're not asking them to do something that's dangerous, impossible, whatever. And they will, in fact, in this warrant study, if there's another way that they can add a turn lane, add a right in, right out, whatever, they will make other recommendations as well.
Mayor, with the, and I know it's on private property, so it's another, it's another story. But have we asked and talked to the folks, too bad Abbey Carpet's there, but great that Abbey's Carpet is there, I mean, for being a partner in our community. But it looks like an opportunity to put a frontage road or a connector road.
There's a lake there, and during the development order process, that was determined a long time ago not to be planned, part of the plan. And of course, Benita Bay Properties had something to say with that, too. They didn't want it to connect up to their main entranceway.
Yeah. I'm not talking about over on Woods, what is that, I can't read it because it's so small.
Well, in...
Country Club Drive. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking more or less where, you know, where our friend who's a lawyer is, Don Thompson, Henderson Franklin Starnes, where that is over there, if there could be some way around the front.
Well, and I don't think this is the time for us to be designing it. The fact of the matter is, is that DOT and the whole group, Christine Ross, all the property owners around that area have been looking for some way to make this happen. And that's just, that's just a pathway to nowhere that's been determined.
And I'm sure, at least I'm confident, that FDOT will take other alternatives into consideration when they run in the warrant study. We'll be working with their engineers, and I'm sure if there is another obvious solution, they'll weigh that as opposed to the traffic signal.
Well, will they be looking at private property options? I don't think so.
I can't tell you what they'll be looking at, but I assume they will be looking at all the options.
Yeah, I think they can only look at public property options.
Well, and I'm not sure that the residents, they may want that. I don't know if the residents of Benita Bay want another 800 cars a day in their intersection. May want to ask them. But anyway, at this time, all I'm asking for is some conditional support with sending a letter that we're in favor of them doing this warrant study and looking into this further from council.
I will move.
They have a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second, further discussion?
Yeah, further discussion. As somebody that didn't have the benefit of this conversation, unfortunately, four years ago, and is now, obviously represents that area in District 4 and lives in that neighborhood right behind there, I can assure you, the last thing in the world I want is another traffic light. And I've heard very loudly and very clearly from initially here from the residents in District 4 that they don't want one either. I don't know if it's an economic development issue. I don't know. I think it could help. Yes, I do believe that. But that aside, I want to strip all of that out and look at this as a safety issue. I had a very preliminary discussion with the Lee County Sheriff's Department this morning. I understand, Arlene, you're in receipt of some information that has some of that information regarding safety, and I don't know if it's appropriate or if we could at this time come forward and discuss that. I'm looking at this solely as a safety issue. And I'd like to hear some more information or whatever information we may have, please.
I'd like to see that.
Officer, come on right up.
Lieutenant.
Officer's not correct.
Prez. The prez.
Sorry.
Lieutenant, they weren't those titles.
I supposed to call you lieutenant.
Lieutenant Brian Presspluiski, Lee County Sheriff's Office. The sheriff's office can only echo the public safety. Anything that has to do with safety, we, I was asked a while back to get some information in regards to that area, reference traffic accidents. And we, I think it's like a couple-block radius that we did. And there are some accidents that have been in the area. I don't have the date in front of me. It was either a year or two years. And the only thing I can echo is just the public safety and one fatality is one too many. That's the way the sheriff's office looks at it. I unfortunately was in that area, not directly right at that intersection, and worked a double fatality, you know, about four or five years ago. So I do know, I understand both sides of it with the traffic lights being back-to-back-to-back, but the safety is our number-one concern. Whatever they can come up and I, the warrants and the surveys, the studies are going to do. But we did come up with some information. We did have some accidents there. I cannot comment on the seriousness of them, or if that is directly impacted by that little particular intersection.
Okay. But during this process, you can make that information available to council in the future. And that will become part of the record and a part of the warrants as well.
Yes.
Mayor.
Okay. Yes, Pete?
And I'd like to finish up on that thought. I mean, I've also heard that obviously the north gate at Benita Bay was denied a traffic light some years ago. And I can hear the screams bloody murder now to even suggest that we add a second location that we examine to have yet another light there. However, when you look at people that pull out of Benita Bay, when you look at people that pull out of that office complex, you know what they're doing. Their nose is potentially in traffic for northbound traffic, and their rear end of their car is in the line of traffic for southbound traffic.
To get out in the middle, yes.
And you're just like a floating duck out there. Do you, any more on that? Or should we make these two distinct letters for those two areas?
I know across the street there, Benita Bay, which is Riverview, and the other side is the Landings, where it used to be Sweet Bay, it's Fresh Market now. Sanctuary apartments, our condos are back there. I know getting in and out of that area, yes, you can go all the way back around to West Terry to get out. But if you want to cut across and go southbound on 41, it's, yes, I've had issues getting out of there myself. And like I said, all the sheriff's office can echo, whatever's best for public safety.
And maybe that's the best way to look at this, is that, you know, I mean, again, the agenda item is to approve the light or solutions, traffic solutions for that area. But part of that process will be to look at the safety, health, and welfare of the people, and not to build something that's unsafe there.
Absolutely.
Mayor?
Okay, yes?
Yes, sir. Well, then you just brought up a good point about the area, because why are we not looking at the Benita Bay-West Terry intersection to see what we could do to improve that? You know, we've talked about roundabouts, and what could be more distinctive? I mean, that is not an intersection like 41 and Benita Beach Road, which is much larger.
Martha, we're not talking about that because the proposal in front of us today is to have a letter signed in support for this particular area of need.
Yes, I understand that.
And there are, we have a lot of other intersections.
Okay. What I'm saying is, this could slow down traffic enough to be able to provide a solution farther down the road. And also, as we learned from the expert that came here about traffic circles, that they provide for a lot of traffic to go through, but in a calm, steady stream, people aren't backing up, might alleviate the Benita Bay people's concerns about, oh, my God, another light I've got to sit at, because I'm sure they don't like sitting at that one. I'd like to, I will vote for it if we include a traffic circle as part of that study.
Anyway, counsel, do you have any other questions for the staff members? What's your pleasure? What would you like to do? Would you like to send a letter of support? Would you not like to send a letter of support? Hello?
I didn't want to table it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add one thing. Arlene Hunter, Director of Development Services, we asked the sheriff's office to provide specific information on this intersection because of an economic development need. We're looking at the Riverview Corporate Center as an important corporate offices, office space that we really want to work towards retail space for. It is a safety concern for Source Interlink employees. We've heard that feedback through the Economic Development Council. So it was one of the challenges we're looking at is trying to incorporate that space. At the same time, staff is more than willing to look at other locations as we move forward, should city council decide to bring that to staff. But we are hoping that you can move forward with support of this letter at this time, because it is an economic development challenge for that corporate center.
Yeah, and I don't want to see another vacant, abandoned, gigantic building. And that's what you're going to get if we don't do something. Yes?
And I just want to say, I guess, lastly, it doesn't matter. I will be supporting this, but it won't be based on, and trust me, I'm the first guy that wants to support economic development. I have heard safety concerns, however, and this vote will be based on safety concerns alone.
Indeed. Okay. Is there a motion?
We already have a motion.
There a motion, a second? Okay. Any other discussion?
Just to reiterate, maybe we need to take a look as we're doing our Benita corridor, our Benita, I'm sorry, our US-41 corridor overlay, which you recommended, Mayor, that we also look at traffic solutions for the whole, that whole stretch, because we're going, you know, if we do this piece by piece by piece, which I know you do, but we should have an overall plan. In my opinion, adding more traffic lights isn't, is sort of a low-hanging fruit solution instead of a creative, here are distinctive Benita solution. I like to see traffic circles on Old 41.
We'll have the discussion someday, and I can't wait to see the crowded forums there. Okay, we have a motion, a second.
Great, Mayor, thank you so much.
Is there any other discussion?
Ben, I got something to say about traffic circles. I come from New Jersey, and we used to have them being very popular years ago when there weren't many cars. But they've taken them all out because they, it's just a, it's now straight and red lights. Keep it simple.
Okay, all right. I'm sure we'll get to talk about this someday. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
No.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, counsel. And what else you got? We got approve a group of roads for consideration as Phase 2.
My last item has to do with the unpaved private roads project. As most of you are now aware, the first phase has been completed. The five out of the six that we were hoping to be able to do were in fact done. We've now settled with the contractor on that. And refund checks, I'm happy to say, to the participants are, I just signed the letters as we were sitting here.
Cool. How much?
Those should be going out this week. What we are also presenting to council at this point is Phase 2 that we're recommending. And I think you can see there are a number of streets that we're proposing for the first time, as well as some that we had proposed in Phase 1, that for a variety of reasons were not successful, but we'd like to give them another shot. What we're hoping, frankly, is that those residents can now take a look at the finished product in other places and reassess their decisions, and maybe we'll get a little more participation. This is a budgeted item in the upcoming year, so it won't affect any changes to your budget if we decide to go forward.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Can I tell you, this is wonderful that we're getting... Can I tell you, this is wonderful that we're getting this finally done, and you know, in a few years, we're going to have them all done. So, thank you so much and congratulations, council. Could I add Tennessee's Delaware Street? It's about 150 feet, lovingly referred to as Dirt Delaware.
I'm not sure why Delaware may not have been considered. There may be reasons that I'm not aware of right now. I left this list up to Public Works. I'd be happy going ahead with this, and then potentially if that, if we get some indication that some of these streets are not going to participate, maybe then we can take a look at adding to that if that's okay.
Does Matt Feeney have any problem with adding Tennessee Street?
Before Matt talks, I have to interject a little bit here, Martha. I know I would really prefer to, in deference to staff, if we're going to have a program, we need to follow staff's recommendation, they're going to get to all these roads. You're planning on getting to all of them, right? Okay. So, but go ahead, come on up.
Very short, Mayor.
Well, we used the roads that we had received solicitations from, as well as some that had looked at participating in the past. It was really driven by the amount of dollars that we had budgeted. So there was no definitive reason why Delaware was not included, just our budgetary numbers.
It's just a money thing and putting priorities in there.
Yes.
Yeah, I see that that little part of Matheson's 4100, Dirt Delaware is going to be less than that because it's shorter, it's just a little spit in the wind, you know? And there's $30,000 left in the budget, I know.
Again, my suggestion would be, if there's consensus to do so, to let us proceed with this list. If we get indications before we go out to bid that some of these streets are not going to be participating, because again, this is a long process where we reach out to the folks, have meetings, point people on each road, have to collect license agreements. If there's an indication that one or more of these streets would not participate, we could always add to that list and keep it within the budget.
Okay. So as you're going through this process, if you need another road there, if somebody drops out and you don't get the participation, you can add somebody else, correct?
Yeah. It's going to cost you less than $4,000 and you get $30,000 less. I'd just like to see it done, that's all. That'll be finished, compito on District Five.
Bill?
John, this list of number of feet, is it less than what the last one you did in terms of total? This is a...
I'm not sure. Matt might be able to address that, but understand too that each of these streets is different, so the cost might not be equivalent, you know, per linear foot.
Next question is, it's not in my district anymore, but is there any way that maybe, and I'm asking as a request, Saunders and McKenna, I've gotten numerous conversations with people on those streets, and they've been very patient, and I don't want to try to overwhelm you with...
Now, some of those streets, some of those streets, I'll have to check my records, but some of those streets were not included in this because frankly, we have already assumed responsibility for those under our maintenance program, so they do not fit under the standard private unpaved streets program.
Okay, well, they're, they need to be done, but...
We'll take a look at that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I ask about Oakland Drive?
Oakland Drive?
Yeah, I want to ask about Oakland Drive because we have our park down there. Why are we not just taking over the maintenance of that? I mean, why don't we just do it and assume the road and make it a city road?
Assuming one of these private unpaved roads for city responsibility involves a lot more than what we're proposing now for this type of program. Again, this is not building a road, this is just making an unsafe situation a little better for those residents and so that emergency vehicles can have better access. If council wants us to look at taking over some of these private roads, I would suggest you let us know which ones that might be, and we can put together an analysis. But at this point, that's not what we're trying to accomplish with this particular program.
I understand.
Right, and this, and again, I have to remind, this agenda item is to approve the group of roads under consideration in this phase two. And I hate to keep reminding you that, and I'm sorry, but that's...
Not a problem, Ben. Oakland Drive, if you want to talk about economic development, is a gateway to our city. Most people that kind of get a flavor of Benita Springs.
But again, we are, that is not on the agenda right now. If you would like to place on the next...
I'm asking if we remove it, Mayor. Thank you. And do it properly. Accept the road and do it properly.
Counsel, what's your pleasure? Do you wish to approve the item?
I wish to move it forward.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the item as recommended by staff. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slacta?
Aye.
John or Carl, do you have anything else for us?
John, you good? Okay. I just got a few more items, and they're more of announcements of types. First off, I just want to let you know that the week of September 9th is shaping up to be a pretty busy one, but we want to kind of let you all know in advance. On September 9th at 5:01 PM, we will have our first budget hearing for the fiscal year 14 that we've been working on. So obviously, the public is invited to attend that. That meeting will be here in the council chambers. As you know, on a separate item, the DRGR study has been ongoing. Draft report has been reviewed by staff, comments were sent back, and those were for clarifications and presentation issues, not technical issues. Our indication from the consultants is that they will, they are likely to be ready to submit the full report to the public and council about a week from now, so maybe August 28th in that area. And that also, we have scheduled a second public workshop on this topic to hear the consultants once again and to receive public comments and concerns, suggestions. That workshop is scheduled for Tuesday, September the 10th at 5:30 PM here in the council chambers. And of course, everyone's welcome and as well as council members, of course. And then on September 11th, which is the next day, at 6:00 PM, there will be a Patriots' Day ceremony, as well as the 911 memorial dedication. And that will be held at 6:00 PM at the Lyles Hotel. So a lot going on, all good things, and of course, we want the public to be involved in all of those. And then just a last comment I have with regards to the comments that Mr. Forbes made with regards to upgrades to Benita Beach Road out east. We have at the direction of council, mentioned of the mayor, we are beginning to work on enhancements to our standards on 41, but also believe that Benita Beach Road is a critical arterial road that goes directly from 75 all the way to the beach. And so we're going to be including those, the upgrades and the enhancements to the Benita Beach corridor as well, which would include the area east of 75 as well. And yes, we're going to be looking at architectural standards, site, lighting, landscaping. We're going to be looking at all of those kinds of things and hopefully be able to bring upgrades to you in the near future.
Good.
And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you very much. Bill?
Carl, is it going to be televised, the DRGR?
Absolutely. It will be televised.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good deal. All right, if that's all from staff, mayor and council member items. Steve, why don't we start down there for...
Okay, thank you very much. Matt, did you want to do one more thing? Thank you. See how I delegate?
Yeah.
Pretty nice.
Trying to do one more thing, I like that.
I would just like to introduce Jennifer Stadler. She's our new employee at Public Works for the front reception desk.
Oh, hello.
Welcome.
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 Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to let you know that I have dibs on Jennifer for our three-on-three coed basketball tournament coming up.
[laughing].
And she's okayed that with me, so we're good. On other notes, congratulations to Lisa Pace, her son David scored perfect score on the math F-C, F-C, F-CAT test. That's not, that's not in the 99th percentile, that's a perfect score on math. So congratulations.
Awesome. That's awesome.
He'll be starting in finance department next month.
Nepotism roll.
Okay, good.
That's awesome.
I have to move for this.
Oh, no.
I don't know why the 10 men are sitting by Team One, but the 10 men belong to Team Two.
We got more here, too.
And I ask everyone in the audience, everybody in the city, in certain way, Team Two's members to bring in this last week.
Here we go. Yay. More stuff.
I got a cup of coffee.
See, more stuff. Yay.
Did I put that in?
There we go.
Thank you, thank you, Mandy Martin, for making this happen. You know, couldn't have been a better project to bring this group together as a city government. So thank you for everybody on this council for your contributions, and back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Janet, what do you have for us?
Couple of things. First off, we need to put on the calendars also, you know, busy stuff in September, but we know October will be here before we know it, and that means River Fest. So October, the 19th, is River Fest, so put that on the calendar, too. We want to see everybody with a kayak in the river, and then of course, we will start with my little friend, the duck will be coming back to council meetings soon, too. And also, September 7th at 10 o'clock, that is the groundbreaking for the partnership of the Rotary and the YMCA for their community garden. As much as it pains me that it's not happening on the Mayhood property, I still think it's a great thing for our community, so I'm really happy that it is happening, and that is their official groundbreaking with the official gardener's opening being in October. And there are opportunities for fundraising by buying pavers, and if you want to be involved with that, it's neat. And then also, I just want to thank staff, especially our Public Works guys. Imperial looks fantastic. If anyone hasn't been down to Imperial to see those trees, it's awesome. So thank you so much for that finally happening. I've heard from so many folks and so many of the residents, they're just thrilled and very happy to see that project come to fruition, so thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Counselman?
Yes, sir. Last night I attended a human services meeting, and there was a study completed by the University of Wisconsin on the state-county level, and in terms of ranking, they ranked two items, health factors and health outcomes. The health factors are like health behaviors, clinical care, social and economic factors, physical environment. Lee County ranked 24, and primarily because, not primarily, but one of the major factors is that there's a lot of obesity now in children in the schools, and tobacco is on the rise, which surprised me. But in terms of length of life and quality of life, we ranked number 11. I wanted to share with you, Mayor, the other day, I was, had an appointment with my orthopedic surgeon, and previously, we talked about, you know, how friendly, I said to him that, he asked if there was any incentives, and I shared with him the incentives in Benita Springs. And when I met with him on Tuesday again, he said, you know, I just want to verify that I know a physician that's in this area, and he indicates that Benita is very friendly. He would highly encourage him to move here, so.
All right. Good deal. It's always good to hear. Yes, Peter?
I'd like to start off by welcoming my father, Peter Simmons here, and his friend, John Bodnar, who is sitting there behind Laura Taylor.
Hey.
Welcome, thanks for coming down. I wanted to congratulate Carissa Carroll, who's the new principal of the Benita Springs Charter School. She has replaced Deb Tracy, and Deb Tracy has been promoted to be the regional Southwest Director of Charter Schools, so good things happening there. And I went over to a meeting with a gentleman named Jim O'Reilly, who actually is a university, fellow University of New Hampshire graduate, who lives in District One, Dr. McIntosh, and he and some professors from the University of Michigan have started an online debate club, which they call igiftedschool.org. Once again, igiftedschool.org. So great things are happening with education here in Benita Springs, and we did meet, like I said, with the principal of the Benita Springs Charter School. They will be implementing and starting that debate program at the Benita Springs Charter School and looking to expand into other schools. They're young, and it's an exciting program to help students sharpen their debate skills, and they'll be adding math. It's an additive to what gifted students and non-gifted students can do to help educate them. Obviously, went up to the Florida League of Cities meeting in Orlando. This booklet here, which once again, I'll be serving on the Growth Management and Economic Development Committee, I've asked that that be sent electronically to Carl and Carl to distribute that, so what you can see we'll be focusing on again this fall. Saw Governor Rick Scott, like I said, for our two minutes, we did focus on the hospital issue. But another issue that I would like to have people explore and express their opinions on are obviously the Lake Okachobee water discharge. Obviously, Senator Nelson was there, he addressed it. Senator Nelson was in Lee County touring the area by helicopter, I believe. Governor Scott has been encouraged to visit the area, and obviously, it's on his forefront. And I also want to compliment my friend from Sanibel Island, Mayor Kevin Ruane, who after the conference in Orlando, and he was there for the entire conference, drove up to Tallahassee to meet with the governor to keep this on the front burner, these water quality issues that we've all heard so much about. And met yesterday with Lisa Pace and Carl and a constituent of mine regarding the upcoming landscaping, and I just want to keep that in the forefront of everybody's mind. And I know we had an exciting discussion and lively discussion this summer on it, absolutely. And I said to Carl yesterday, it's, for a guy that initiated this, I feel like I've won the battle yet lost the war. And you're scratching your head saying, what the heck's he talking about? Well, we pass this. We're moving forward with this. However, the discussion that needs to ensue, the vote was seven to zero to move forward. However, the vote was four to three on how we're going to pay for it. And I stand firm against increasing the mill rate on this. I reintroduce or rediscover, as it will, how we're going to pay for it initially, as I proposed, it would be over the course of three years without increasing the mill rate. So I don't know if we want to have any discussion or just keep it on the front burner here today, but I know that discussion will be coming up, and not backing off for a second, we're going to beautify this city. We live in a beautiful city, there's exciting things happening here. However, not at the risk of increasing the mill rate, increasing taxes for the citizens of Benita Springs.
Well, Peter, I'm glad you feel like, because I think that the instructions that we gave staff at the end of that meeting was, although we had set that millage rate up slightly higher, was for them to go ahead and explore ways to go ahead and keep it at the exact millage rate and still be able to get the job done. And I have every confidence in the world that they will do everything they can to see that they give us options, and that may include, you know, lowering our expectations a tad, a tad, and/or extending the length of time out that we need to do that. So I think that you're right on the right track there, and I have every confidence in the world, having seen 14 of these budget cycles go through, we generally end up in exactly the right place, so. But thank you for bringing it up.
Absolutely.
Anything else for us? Any...
No, we're good.
Okay, good.
Go Benita.
Yeah, Martha, Councilwoman Simons, what do you have for us today?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. One, let's talk about the kiosk at the YMCA. How can we manage that to happen? I don't know if that's a Public Works or a, you know. And whatever we do, just do it in consultation with Councilwoman Martin down there, and so we get it placed in the right place, so BNP gets the kind of acknowledgement it needs.
John, could you, could you, or who would be ever be the best person to do that, to go ahead and contact the YMCA and see if we can get a kiosk put up there that would contact the YMCA and see if we can get a kiosk put up there that would direct people to the nature center?
Let staff just take that as a general interest, that you'd like to see that happen, and we'll pursue it.
I'd like the trail to be...
Sure.
Could you go and take care of that?
Yeah, we'll handle that.
Thank you very much.
The whole environmental neighborhood, bring it on. Thank you, Mayor.
You're quite welcome. Anything else for us?
Yes, sir. I read in the newspaper, so we can't tell if it's all true, but I also think I read it in the, no offense, guys back there, that I read it in the county budget that they were going to be looking at some efficiencies for the bus system, and part of that was cutting back frequency, and that was going to affect all routes, as I understand. So, my question to Carl, because they're going to be cutting two routes, but there were some officials cutting back to 6:00 on weekends, or something like that. I don't remember the details, but my question is, if that's happening, our part that we pay as a contribution to our routes, if they're going to be cutting them back, are we going to get a return on our money?
If I can address that, there were a list of routes that would be affected in terms of not outright elimination of the route, but cutbacks in hours of service or frequency, but none on those lists affected either the Link or the 150 route.
Okay, let's just, it seemed like they were talking about all of them, that they were cutting all...
There was an identified list in the budget workshop that they discussed on Monday, but neither of those routes were on that list.
Okay, I just want to make sure we check on that this fall. Okay, number three, I want to congratulate C.H.Tum Hill, who was at the Flori, yes, you wake up, John, at the Florida League of Cities, John was there, and as was the, you know, the upper corporate tier, and of course, we had to tell them how, what a great job they were doing for us. And also, I introduced John to a commissioner from the city of Sarasota, because I know him from the Regional Planning Council, they have issues with homeless shelters, and John talked about what our regulating permit was, so our influence is spreading, and he was, Mr. Commissioner Shaw told me you were very, very helpful, and he's very delighted to speak with you, so thank you. And I've already described what happened at the League somewhat before, so I won't go into that. I'm on the Energy and Environmental Quality Committee. Okay, so, we might have a solution for these cats running around town. I know this is not a, you know, the forefront of a lot of people's minds, but in the older part of the city, in many parts of the city, Hunter's Ridge, all over the place. I called Dr. Himici after talking to Donna Ward, the executive director, I was up there about another dog, and caught her in the hall, and I think we're going to get a TNR location in Benita Springs, so people right here will be able to bring those cats that need to be spayed or neutered over to Dr. Himici. We'll be talking to him tomorrow with the executive director and city staff and hammering something out, but what it looks like so far, Councilwoman Martin will be able to bring kitties right over to Old 41, so people don't have to do that driving all the way up at 8:00 in the morning and dropping them off in Fort Myers, then coming back, then going back and picking them up at 3:30. It just doesn't get done that way. I mean, nobody wants to do that, and nobody can do that, because you're work. So, more good news later about that. And it probably won't cost us nearly a dime. Okay, but we'll talk about that later, too. That wraps it up, Mayor. Thanks very much, everybody. Have a great week.
Thank you very much. Bill, what do you got for us, sir? Yeah, that's probably, yeah, be careful.
What have you done?
I picked it up. I've never seen you quite so animated, Bill.
First of all, easy boy, let me just talk about the bus that goes to Florida Gulf Coast University. They decided not to keep it, and that costs $250,000, Martha, so to your point, I don't think they're going to stop funding the 171, but don't forget, we paid $2.4 million out of the general fund to support the deficit plus the cost of running Lee Trans system. Peter, thank you for your comments in reference to the budget. I think, from a public relations point of view, knowing that our mill rate is lower than unincorporated county is a good thing, and I believe in my heart that, knowing the finances of the city, and it is well managed by the rest of the people up here, that we can maintain the millage rate, and at the same time, take care of the landscaping in the entire city in a proper way, and it'll be beautiful when it's finished. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything else for us?
That's it, I'm going to put it back.
You better put that back. I think Carl's got his eyes on it, he's going to go out and buy another two tons of groceries tomorrow.
Just for the record, Mr. Mayor, the reason that Tin Man was here because my team won last week, okay, so just so we're clear, okay? It really belongs here until the council wins it back.
You know, you can trash talk all you want, let's look at the numbers.
Bring it on, bring it on.
There are probably about, like, 30 people in the room who really don't care about this.
Probably don't even know what this is. Actually, this Tin Man was actually designed and constructed by one of our maintenance guys, and he did just a great, great job. So good that people are fighting over it, you can tell.
Okay. Nevertheless, I do have something, actually, thank you for asking. As you've probably seen on the news and in the paper, you're seeing way too much of me lately, I know that, but we do have some activity going on when it comes to the annexations that the city has entertained by request, and because of the referendum that we are doing, and which is, the referendum is, actually, we're just asking a question of the 20% of the community that got left out of the original incorporation. Asking then, hey, you got left out before, would you like to become a part of Benita Springs now? It's just a question, all right? So, none of you have anything to apologize for, this community has nothing to apologize for, I want to reiterate that again. At the same time, the community of Estero has decided on their own, whether they want to say it's because of us or not, fine, that they want to incorporate. I think that, personally, my personal feelings, I think that's great, that that process they're going to go through is an important process, and if they decide to do it, that's fine. What I need to check in on you with is kind of a position that I've been taking, and that I would like to check on with you and be sure that it's okay that I say this, and which is this, which is the original two-mile buffer that is usually, has to be held within two communities, right? My view, and I'm sure you've read it in the paper, has been that I feel as though that entire two-mile buffer, I think that that's unrealistic on our part. That would be an unrealistic position for us to take. At the same time, I don't think it's about buffer, I don't think it's about any of that at all. I think it's about the right for people to self-determine, the right for people to be able to determine if they want to be unincorporated in Benita Springs or in Estero. It's as simple as that. And I think that what we should be asking for, and what I've been asking the legislators to do, and what I've been, you know, challenging our, the ECL and those people to do is to come and meet with us and talk about it, is that we know that the area in the Brookes, we know that they identify with Estero, we're fine with that. We're fine with a lot of what they're proposing, but there are some areas that you could at least debate whether or not the people might or might not want to come in the area. We would ask that the legislation actually hold that as an area of self-determination, hold that outside the original incorporation effort. It will not prevent them from incorporating, it will not hurt them substantially fiscally. That area, we haven't drawn that out yet, we would like to, we would like to have the opportunity to go ahead and do some, not horse trading, but do some negotiation in that regard, if they will come to the table. But for them to say that anything that's not Benita Springs Incorporated is Estero is just as unrealistic as us saying that everything in that two-mile buffer should be off limits.
I agree with it 100%.
So, that's, with your blessing, that's the message that I want to take to them, is to say that, look, there's room for debate here in some of this, there's room for us to go ahead and agree with each other, but we need to have an area where, where community by community, Estero should be able to ask the question, we should be able to ask the question, there should be individual referendums, it's not expensive, three bucks a vote it costs to find out the question, to have a mail ballot, to where everybody has a chance to opine on whether they would want to be in one or the other. And all we're asking at this time is to do that. It doesn't preclude them from being part of Estero if they want to.
Absolutely.
It doesn't, it doesn't at all. All it does is allows them to be set out of the original ones, so that question can be asked. Is that position okay with you at this time?
And Mayor, however, on the other hand, if they do not come to the table, then what is the feeling about working with the state legislature to say, legislators, we're willing to move a little bit, how about we work with softening these edges? If we find that's not possible, then we stick to the two-mile buffer, I'm not ready to give it up entirely.
Well, and I think that our, our position has been this so far, or my, what I've been telling them is this, and which is as truthful and honest as a statement can be, I think, and I hope that the council would agree, which is, look, please, we don't think this is something that the legislative delegation, this shouldn't be an expectation that they arbitrate between the two of us, we're adults, we're both adults, we're both fairly mature communities, we should be able to work this out, if both sides are willing to be reasonable. If that is not the case, then what we're doing is asking the legislators that we will present what we think is a viable option. You tell us, as legislators, whether or not that the standard ought to be self-determination, period. That ought to be our goal, and if this doesn't meet the goal of self-determination, well, then you should toss it out. But if it does meet that goal, if all of our goals should be, and we're not telling them, oh, it should be Benita, we're telling them, they should have a choice. If anybody wants to argue that people shouldn't, I don't know how you can win that argument. So, that would be the second way, is that we're going to be in parallel, approaching our legislators, and simply saying, this doesn't belong to Estero, this doesn't belong to Benita, these properties belong to these people, and they deserve...
It belongs to the county right now.
Well, it doesn't belong to the county either.
Yeah, well, that's true, it's within their jurisdiction at this time.
These properties belong to these people, and they have a right to self-determine, and that's all we're asking. Is that okay?
I do support it, and I want to add one thing. We have, I said from the beginning, we have more in common with Estero than we don't. We will accomplish more in tandem than we can separately, and, you know, this is an opportunity for us to pull together and say, okay, we may not agree totally, but this is a way to go forward. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing that forward.
Absolutely. Our goal is to be able to get to a position to where we can stand side by side with them, go to the legislature and say, yes, we support their effort. That's what we want to be able to do, is support their effort, and that should be what they want, too. Instead of us being at odds, that's just ridiculous. We should be up there with each other, and what we're asking won't preclude them from obtaining whatever it is they want to, eventually. Okay? Good. You don't need to have a vote or anything like that, I just want, if I was off base, I wanted you to tell me at this time.
Mayor, on this particular issue, I'd just like to bring a point up, that, I know I shared it with Carl, I was in between flights, and a TV station called me up and said, "Do you agree with the mayor regarding the buffer?" And I just think it's, you know, like I'm going to disagree, I mean, but anyway...
You're allowed to.
But the point, I can disagree.
That's crazy talk.
But when it comes to an issue like this, our rules of conduct say that the mayor is our spokesperson, if I'm correct.
Well, and I think, I think that, what, here's what I would ask of you. In some of these domains, in regards to governmental affairs, well, you're right, that, I am that person, that is, my job is to be that governmental affairs and relations person. But for this particular, or any particular task that we have at hand, it's always to have a voice. And in this particular situation, we've kind of, through staff and through talking with, you know, everybody who's been involved here, is that there needs to be a voice. If you want me to be that voice in this regard, I'm glad to do, I'm glad to do that. And I will periodically come back and check with you and say, look, am I messing up? What you're hearing is, because, and please, in the meeting, when we have a meeting, be sure and tell me, well, when I ask the question, you know what, I'm okay with that, but you know what, we don't want to go down that road. And I will convey that message, if that is okay with you. And Bill, go ahead.
I have a suggestion. You are the point person, there's no question about that, and you do a great job. However, I do think that it's gotten beyond the one person, I think the entire council should be a joint meeting with the ECL, or some, more communication with more people, instead of you taking the butt of criticism from different sources, which I don't have much time for, but it happens because you're active, and that's the way it's supposed to be. But I would suggest that we have a joint meeting with the ECL in some fashion, because we have to have, everybody has to be here, and I don't know if that's a...
It's like we have a cocktail party.
Well, yeah.
That's what I'm going to do before the meeting.
It's just my personal thought about it.
Bill, I would welcome that, and we are, we are, we are pretty persistently wanting them to come to the table, but there's one thing that has to happen before that. There's no sense having a meeting if no one's willing to give.
Yep, well...
If they're not willing to entertain the thought of compromise, there's no sense having a meeting.
You can always ask.
We can always, and we are continually asking. But thank you very much, you are absolutely correct, okay?
Mayor, to Councilwoman Slack's point, I appreciate you coming back and checking in with us, because that's what we do. We don't go out there and, like, represent something that's our personal opinion. He came back to us and said, "It's his council's opinion, that's what he does as a leader," and I appreciate that. Yeah, sure, I would like a cocktail party, actually. I mean, really, you remember when we did this with, and I'm not kidding, I'm not kidding, because when we had the city manager search, and we had a little reception to get to know people, you know, when we sit around the horseshoe with ECL, we are bound by our sunshine laws, they are not, you know, so they're out strategizing and doing all that stuff. We're here, out in public, doing the strategizing, what you see is what you get. We don't know what, we don't know, because if they're not going to talk to us, and they don't do it out in public, we don't know what kind of partner we're going to have. They have been our partner, and we have to remember, the land is not going to get up and walk away, they will be our partner for years and years to come. And we, you and I and the rest of the council, have been home rule advocates for, that's why we're on a city council, because we believe in the power of representative government and self-determination, and we certainly want that for anybody, and we want that for them. In the future, I'll make a little gentle prediction, but, you know, remember before we were the city, and we didn't have a city council, and everybody, well, most people, were like, oh, we're going to have a city, and it's going to be paradise, and it's going to be wonderful, which, you know, it's coming to be like that, but it's not without its ups and downs, and the swords that we pointed at Lee County then became pointed inward at ourselves, right? And don't think, our dear brothers and sisters in Estero, that once you get your city, you're going to have bumps to go over, and you're not going to be able to, you know, you won't have Richard Nixon to kick around anymore, but you won't have Benita to kick around anymore. You know, the same thing, you will be looking internally at what you need to be doing for your community, and you're going to have your bumps, and you're going to be pointing your arrows inward, and we're going to be there to support your leaders when you have great ideas, and when we face the county together or the state. So, we have to remember this, our good friends in Estero, we're all in it together. So, come and talk to us, and if it means we have to throw a cocktail party, we'll have one.
I'll arrange it.
You'll arrange it at Worthington. That'd be awesome.
Coconut Point Hyatt?
No, 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 no.
Oh, look at you, you statesman, you. Okay, all right, that's enough of that. I think I asked for what, I got what I asked for, didn't I? Whoa. Okay, and that's all I have for now. Would anyone like to prove the minutes?
I would.
Okay, motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longcard?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slack?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Okay, and now, public comment, anyone wishing to speak to any matter whatsoever, please come forward.
Rick Steinmeier, the mayor's position in the charter is to run the meetings now. You start making statements to the other people, it's nice that you come back and say, well, I said this is at our right. I'm not certain that you're not looking for problem, making more problems than you're solving, because you are pretty strong in your opinions and your influence, and I just ask you to be careful, I guess might be the word. Since we don't have a monthly progress report, I'd like to know what's happening at the Rosemary Park, whether that park is being built at Rosemary Park, are the bus shelters that we talked about, have they been built? Now, as far as the rate, the current proposal is a 9.7% increase in the rate. You know, it sounds like a couple pennies, but if you take 8.1 and 8.9 and divide it out, and Lisa says 9.7% increase, we have at least a 3% increase in the value of property I don't think that 3% increase in property values is been, is the official number yet. Property values going up, at least in the last couple months, maybe a lot more than that, so I hope we can analyze that. After the 24th, I guess the trim numbers come out with the official evaluations that Wilkinson will come up with, and I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Deborah McLean with the Banana Peel Publisher. Speaking about the landscaping, which is civic pride, you know, our project, I understood why the millage rate was proposed, and I would like to remind you that you decided that you could well afford to do a very high-end, almost better than Naples, citywide, but what you couldn't afford, which was thrown in, is that we have about 12 bridges, and we focused on Old 41 and New 41 being something to be proud of, but there are 12 bridges that we should be proud of, so that factor was not included, and you did ask for the numbers... was not included. And you did ask for the numbers. You asked staff to get the numbers together. So, that is why the proposed figure was higher than the original, this year's millage rate of .81 something, 73. So, I agree with what happened. It's 8973 proposed because the research on the cost of redoing bridges so that they're not ugly, and they are on our gateway, there's four. There's four little bridges on Beach Road and two Whopper bridges on the two 41s. And then we have Matheson in Pennsylvania. So, I was trying to, I don't have the exact number, but that's not figured in to keeping the millage rate the same. They are crucial in the gateway or in the improvement proposal. All right, I'm done with landscaping. And again, it's US 41, Old 41, Bonita Beach Road, and Imperial Parkway, but we can't forget Terry. So, item number one was education. I would like to see the Economic Development Group be required to research private schools, to increase the type of people that come here, to get a younger group. So, I think that economic development is also educational facilities, and that means private. So, they need to be looking, they did that for preschool. They did that for childcare. They have a wonderful thing on Old 41 near Shaw Development. I think they need to put some pressure on them and don't give them any money until they do. And the other thing that's interesting is our insufficiency in our sufficiency review. And it came up today. We need some lights. So, we need to review our traffic patterns and establish where we need additional lights and turn lanes. We need to also decide whether we want to get rid of four-lane roads and put parallel parking on either side, or put center aisles, you know, islands for landscaping. And we have to look at beach parking. We are not sufficient. Our traffic flow, we are insufficient, obviously. We need lights. We have no infrastructure for black pipe, which is the internet. And with regard to roundabouts, that's another traffic flow issue. So, we do have to review our comprehensive plan again, just as we did for, in ordinances for homeless shelters. We have to stay state of the art. We are something that other cities and states are jealous of. So, let's continue to lead the way and continue to review and improve our comprehensive plan. And I'm talking about the sufficiency review for fire, sheriff, and education. I think it's lacking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
It is good afternoon. Kathy McGrath for the record. And I'd like just to offer just a few short comments as a over-40-year property owner and over-30-year-year-round resident. First of all, thank you for your decision on the Shy Wolf Nature Place thing. I felt the emotional thing, too. I was there one-on-one, but it was just not appropriate to be at Nature Place. And you may or may not know is, yes, they have to expand, but they were also, they had complaints. They have to move. They're not allowed to advertise. They're not allowed to have any signage. And the way they can do their tours now is they, at nine o'clock in the morning, they call it the celebration of the animals' lives, and that's how they can do that. So, I hope they find a way, a place to move to. But I don't think Wonder Gardens is appropriate either. Now, I'd like to comment on Table of Grace's wanting to move into Maria's. And I know they're going to, they're thinking of signing a contract. I said it before, I'll say it again. My idea of revitalization of downtown Bonita did not include another church. And I know they said that if possibly, if they're denied having worship services there, and believe me, everyone has the right to worship as they wish. I'm not saying anything against them and what they're doing. But if they're using this as a criterion, they say, well, if we can't have a house of worship there, we will pull out of the agreement. Well, I think the economy is improving enough that someone else will show up there for Maria's. All right? Number three, rocking at Riverside Park. I think that's wonderful. Anytime you have a free thing for the people to do in our beautiful Riverside Park, it's positive. Number four, let me comment on this water quality issue. They keep talking about, we're getting 70% and the East Coast only 30%. Yes, it's unappetizing. It's brown. But what you don't know is, I have friends that live in Stewart. Over there, it's a health hazard. They've got green algae. There is no, no fish, no, not no fishing, no swimming signs posted. And people are breaking out in rashes. And I've passed information on. I think I talked to Joelle Parks with NBC2. I believe they're going to do a segment, so watch it tomorrow. We have to get both sides of it. I know we're both suffering, but that's a health hazard. Okay. I think the last thing is my food for thought. You know, I always have to something. Let's see if our guru here, Martha, knows who said this. I'm not smart, but I read what smart people say. I've learned that people will forget what you said. People will forget what you did. But people will never forget how you made them feel. Do you know who said that?
I can't remember.
Abby Hayes.
Ah, get it.
Marilyn Williamson?
Maya Angelou.
Oh, Maya Angelou, okay.
Thank you for letting me.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none, everyone, thank you very much. Council, excellent job. Way to hang in there throughout the whole thing.
Thank you.